I love it. Okay, we're gonna start off. Madam Clerk, we're gonna have Vicki Van Buren lead us in the pledge allegiance. We think it's appropriate for you to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Mayor, if you're good, I'll go ahead and call, roll call for item A2. Councilmember Breckus, Doer, Martinez, Ebert, Taylor, Reese, Sheevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, before we get into public comment, our first very special public comment, we are excited about who's gonna kick this off. We would like to wish Councilwoman Doer a very, very happy birthday because your birthday is tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Don't you love that when people out you?
I don't know if I love that, but I feel like coming from the heart. So, thank you, everyone.
So, we thought we would start off by singing you "Happy Birthday."
Yeah.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Naomi.
We gotta work on that one.
To you.
Thank you. Yeah, that "What's-her-name" thing? No, thank you so much for the flowers, the balloon, the gorgeous card, the heartfelt sentiment. It really means a lot. Yeah, I don't usually advertise my birthday too much, but I do celebrate the day, so I hope to have most of tomorrow off either working in the garden.
That's not happening.
Cleaning the house, doing something cool, so playing with pictures. Thank you so much, everyone.
Well, happy birthday from all of us.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open item A3, which is general public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there's disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Jerry Mifsud.
Jerry, good morning. How are you? Thank you, Larry.
Can I get the, can I get that here, Tony? There's Richard Nixon. Devin Reese. Okay. I really wanted to come up here and try to switch gears and sing you a song. But Mr. Reese got the best of me before this meeting started. He called me homophobic, and I called him some names, too. If you're willing to crawl into the mud, that makes you just as dirty as me, so you need to have some better ethics.
Let's not be demeaning.
It's almost a year ago that I was thrown out of the city, city hall meeting here because I was wearing this shirt, this open, and Mr. Reese said that I was inappropriately dressed. There is no dress code, there was no dress code, and there still isn't a dress code. Jenny stuck up for me that day. Chris Peterson of the ACLU said it was troubling what you did in the meeting, the private meeting with the mayor. She would say that if she was here on that day, none of this would've happened, none of what would've happened, none of what you did. You stepped out of line, and you were wrong. This all could've been ended. For a year, I've been up here, up here complaining. This all could've been avoided. I'm embarrassing myself and you if you only would've followed up on the meeting that we said we'd have in the very, very beginning after this all took place. And you agreed to a meeting, then you said, "What's it gonna be about?" And I said, "All that I want is a personal, private apology." You never got in touch with me, you didn't wanna do that. Two words, "I'm sorry," that's all you had to say. Man, I could be agendized. We, when we talked on the September 27th, that day, we did say, when Carl said you're getting no money, you said the city council can determine that. Please, you could send me right over there right now, and I could be put on the agenda where I could appeal and plead my own case. I still have a case, I have medical records, and if I don't look emotionally displaced from that day, believe me, you need glasses because it's upset me. It's really sent me spiraling on downward. I still do a lot of work for my fellow seniors, and you could agendize. I've seen you send people right over there, Mayor, and they set up that, for me to put me on the agenda. I appeal to you, let, do that. You said that you could, and I thought you'd follow up from that meeting and do that. Carl came up to me and said, "You're not getting on any city council meeting." He, who's determining what here? Is it you, is it Carl? Or when you speak to me privately, are you breaking the open meeting law when it should be a collective thing? I'm not accusing you of anything, Mayor Sheevy. I just want you to send me over there and put me on the agenda, let me plead my own case. It could end all of this because there's no end in sight at this point. Can you do that? Can you agendize me? Can you? Can you send me over there right now? I've seen you do this before, Hillary. You said, forget the fact that you said you're my friend. You see what it's put me through. This is embarrassing. Can I get on the agenda to speak before the city council? I know this is not a dialogue kind of thing. Can I walk over there and cannot happen?
You can have any conversation you want with Madam Clerk. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, next.
Madam Mayor, we have no additional public comment at this time. Additionally, we have not received any correspondence, so we're closing out item A3, public comment, and moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right, may I get a motion? I have a motion? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna move into our B items today, which is item B1, presentation discussion and potential direction to staff for the budget of fiscal year 22, 23, 24.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor Reese, and council members. Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, here to give you a budget update for next year's budget. We had a workshop in March, and this will be our second workshop as we lead up to budget adoption, which would be later this month. And so, give me one second to get situated here. I wanna start today with just saying I appreciate all the support of staff here. It's very nice to have that. I do wanna say that this is a team effort, though, and it really starts with council, so I want to give you kudos for giving us the direction and the guidance to really make this a fiscally sustainable budget and giving us the guidance that's led up to this over the years that I've been here. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the staff support as well, so I just wanna say thank you. Today's agenda, we're gonna start by talking about council's overarching goals, the budget development overview, and the proposed additions, which are selected by the city manager as recommended to be additions to next year's budget. We'll move into capital improvements and then talk about maintenance and replacement programs, and then the long-term liability funding, fee schedule, and then a fund summary. Those will, I will present all of those. And then we'll move into the street capital highlights. Carrie Kosky will present those, Director of Public Works, and then your Director of Utility Services will present the sewer capital highlights to go through those projects in more detail. We did not do that with the first budget workshop, and so I'm trying to make sure we cover everything, but there's so much information that we kinda have to decide which parts to go into deeper as we meet each time. So, last time, we kind of told you what the projects would be, but it'll be a deeper dive into those projects this time. So, we start with council's priorities when we always start with the budget, as before. The overarching goals of council determine the budget decisions and where the budget goes for each year and how we determine what we can fund and what we should fund going forward as such. Fiscal sustainability is the biggest piece that I look at as far as bringing a balanced budget back to council. That's been council's priority to get to that balanced budget for a long time. Last year, we did present a balanced budget, and that was the first time since 2014, and prior to that, it was many years prior to that. We are increasing general fund reserves in this budget. That provides that sustainability and that ability to be flexible in case revenues don't come in where they, we anticipate, even though we're being conservative, so that's part of creating that sustainable budget for you as council. We're also decreasing unfunded liabilities like workers' comp and post-employee benefits such as retiree health, so we'll move into that when we get there. Budget development overview, we talked about this at our March meeting. Economic factors really are about the same as what we anticipated when I was here in March. The state had their economic forum, and they met this week. It was interesting to, to see what they were saying there, where their overall state economy, they're saying is quite strong. They're seeing a lot of gaming revenue and such as far as the state, their revenues are, their revenue streams are very strong coming into the states. They're not thinking that it's going to be the economic downturn for this state as far as the state's budget. As far as municipalities like us and the county and the other cities, local agencies, we are seeing a little less robust information than what the state is seeing because our revenue sources are a little different, and they're provided to us in a little different way. So, the biggest portion of that is sales tax, and that distribution to us is affecting us more than it does the state. So, although the state is predicting a little better outlook right now, we are still expecting a broad economic downturn with the city. We think it's gonna be modest, but we do think it's gonna be broad, and so this budget has been built based on that to be conservative. As you can see from the information in the news right now, the financial banking crisis kinda continues, that makes markets volatile, and everything still remains fluid. So, we're still really at that point where we're waiting to see what happens, we're waiting to see how it affects the city, but we're doing our best to be conservative and map it out based on the information that we have. I want to do an overview of what we talked about in March. So, when we met in March for the budget workshop, we, I presented to you the baseline budget, which included the current staffing levels, the service contracts, and the capital allocations that we're currently doing. So, it was a baseline budget, did not have any additional adds in that budget. With that, we had consolidated tax was factored at 4.8% for the current year and 4% for next year. Property tax was at 6.3% for the current year and 5.5% for next year. I mentioned previously during that meeting that the 5.5% for next year for property tax was a little conservative. I did expect it to come in higher, and it has, and we'll see that in the next couple slides. But that did give us a little room as far as being able to balance this budget and continue to keep it a balanced budget as we move forward. The budget also includes the prior-year increases. Council approved 7% increase to service and supplies to adjust for inflation and contractual increases. That was approved by council last year. And then it does include the annual maintenance funding of the $5 million that we talked about, and then collective bargaining agreements. Those have clauses in there for COLAs and other special pays and such that was built in. And then we did have a very significant PERS increase, which is the Public Employees Retirement System, and that increase will go into effect July 1st. And so, all of these items were included in that baseline budget as it was presented to you, and it maintained a balanced budget. Today's topics are gonna be more about what, what we're seeing going forward and what we think we can add to the budget to help enhance services and to enhance council's goals as far as your priorities. When the departments submitted their requests for additional funding this year, they were told to submit everything they needed to do their jobs to their fullest, to feel like they could do everything they needed to do to accomplish everything that they wanna do service-wise for the city. And so, in that, we had approximately $50 million of requests from the departments. It's a large number. Most of it was in the general fund, $41 million in the general fund of additional requests. As you can see from this chart here, most of this was in positions, requesting for new positions within the departments. That's the little blue bar that you see here. The green bars are the service and supplies that requested by the departments. Most of those positions were requested within police and fire with 102, and, and police requested in 36 in fire. As we move into this next iteration of the, the budget, as you can see here, we've updated revenue projections. We do this following the March workshop because we have a couple of extra data points at that, at point, and each line item is gone through and trended as far as how we're seeing those revenues come in. Some went up a little bit, some went down a little bit, but for the most part, overall, they came in pretty even, some went up, some went down. The biggest portions that changed were the consolidated tax factors and the property tax factors. So, for consolidated tax, we originally had it around 4%. We've revised those numbers, and we have 2.7% for the current year and 2.1% for next year. Property tax, we received the final numbers from the state, which we did not have in March, and so we have 6.7% for the current year and 8.5% for next year. And so, with those consolidated tax going down and property tax going up, we really ended up kind of in the same place, and we don't have a lot of extra money in the general fund as far as to add anything to it as anticipated because consolidated tax has continued to slide a little bit. One of the things with consolidated tax is we see that in months where we have winters where it's really cold, it always goes down. The trend is we always have a decline in C-tax in months where there's, there are cold months. It's, it's just people stay in, they don't go out and spend. So, one of the things is we think that February came in low, and obviously, I believe that March will come in low as well. We won't have that until the end of the next month, but I believe that March will come in as, low as well. April and May, I believe, will start to trend up a little bit. We will see a little bit of a rebound because as the weather gets better, people get out, they spend a little more, and we will see that. That's a typical trend, not just for this particular year, but for any year where we have a really cold winter. We're gonna go into additional funding requests, the proposed, what we proposed, and then the capital project highlights.
Madam Mayor, before we go into the detail, could we just ask a question about this information? I just, could, would you mind? Is that okay? I just wanted to get a bottom line on all this that you've presented. So, what do you think the, the increase is? Like, if you could summarize all of this?
As far as C-tax and property tax, really, they've offset each other because we received more property tax than what we originally built into the budget, and we've decreased the C-tax factors.
So, it's this green circle kinda summarizes all of the preceding information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question to you?
Let's let her get through this, and then we'll come back.
She's got about a half, half inch, three, you know, third-inch packet that I just got this morning. You know, so if, if, we're gonna be here for six hours, and I get six minutes of questions, it's gonna be a problem for me, 'cause...
Yeah, I know. Don't worry about it. We'll get to your question, Councilwoman.
Okay, so my, don't worry about it. I'm not given a chance to ask a question like Ms. Doer right now.
Don't you only have four slides left?
Sure. Okay. We can get through the, if we could get through the general fund, that would be nice.
Okay, let's do that, and then you guys can ask, ask questions.
Thanks. So, today, today's, today's presentation is really kind of an addition to the presentation that we did in March. Councilmember Breckus brought up a good point with the presentation that was done in March. We provided a giant binder. That binder summarized every fund, everything we had. This presentation today is just an update on the tweaking that we've done with the revenues, the additional items that we're doing here, and just where everything lays out. Nothing else has really changed as far as your big binder that was given to you in March. So, what we can do is just go through the items that have changed up to this point. It's a balanced budget. We're increasing the general fund reserves, it's the same slide that you saw last time, going up by 1% from 14% to 15%. We're decreasing the unfunded liabilities, again, same information, the same $22 million that we're putting toward that from the general fund. And then, part of the topic that we really brought out in the last meeting was facility maintenance program and what that would look like based on that facility index condition report that your Director of Public Works went over with you. That's really the next direction, is starting to fund that deferred maintenance, and so we're gonna talk a little bit about facility maintenance as well as just maintenance and reserves in general because that's the really big win in this budget. Although we may not have a lot of additional positions this year, we have a really big win in funding this deferred, funding deferred liabilities and really making the budget sustainable, ongoing, and resilient, ongoing. So, the proposed budget by fund type shows the, the different funds that are associated. This is the total city budget, it's 862 million. It does fluctuate up and down a little bit based on the number and, and size of the capital projects. The general fund is the largest, it's $321 million. This includes the fund balance, and it does exclude transfers. The sewer fund is the next largest, and that's $227 million. These are the proposed additions by council priorities. So, these would be the additions that, that new items from the last time. So, when we met last time, we had a bal, we had a balanced budget, but it was a baseline balanced budget, nothing new added. These are the additions that are being proposed to be added, and they're based on council's priorities. So, infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability, we have $2.8 million. Includes nine new positions, some training staff, some training increase budget, sewer capacity analysis, Tom Whorf consultants, and an open space management contract. In economic and community development, this would be in your development services area. There are two positions being proposed. In arts, parks, and cultural resources, we have some art repair and maintenance and an art master plan proposed. And then in public safety, for fire, we have $400,000 proposed for a turnout replacement program. And again, advancing these replacements and maintenance programs is really important for the sustainability of the city. And so, I really wanna highlight this $400,000 for turnout replacement, build-in, built-in, ongoing, this would be a new program going ongoing, similar to the fire apparatus program, similar to facilities program. It's a program so that we know we are funding the needs in the future. And then we also have on here the paramedic, we're, three positions for paramedics. These are cost-neutral because they're funded through federal emergency management funds that are reimbursed, so it's 100% fully reimbursed. The additions for this current, current budget are 14 being proposed. In public works, maintenance and operations, and utility services, that category has nine positions in there. There's three in public safety, those are the three for the paramedics for fire, and then there's two in economic and community development. Again, those are in development services. So, as you can see, over the last five years, I wanted to show you this slide because we've added 211 positions over the last five years, if you include next year as well with the 14 positions. That's 40% of those positions, 85 of them are, 40% are public safety. So, I think that's a really good thing to note. Also, it's an average of 42 positions every year over the last five years, which is approximately a 15% increase in staffing. So, and I do wanna note that fire staffing is at an all-time high right now. If we go into the general fund, we really are not proposing any additional funding in the general fund other than these, this turnout replacement program. And again, like I said, this is a really important program because this is necessary equipment that is needed by fire personnel. This is the personal protective equipment that is needed, and we need a program in order to replace that. Typically, we've used one-time funding as needed to do this, but really, this should be a replacement program, just like fire and fire apparatus fleet, anything else that we have, and this is another program that we are starting, and it's, it's part of that resilient budget, so we don't have to look to other sources to try to fund things that are needed. And then the three paramedics on here, again, these are cost-neutral and fully reimbursed. When you look at the general fund, this is the general fund overview. Consolidated tax and property taxes are the two, two big bars on the bottom, and obviously, those are the largest bars. They are trending a little more flat this year, so you can see that we flattened that out, so mostly that's due to consolidated tax going from last year's actuals of 94 million to an estimate of 97 this year to a projected of 99 next year. So, that's really slowed that progression as far as the growth there. When you look at C-tax history, this one is interesting because in fiscal year 21, we were up 19%. Typically, you're around 4% to 5% growth in, in consolidated tax, and since we're seeing that flattening and based on the data points that we have so far this year, we are anticipating that we'll be up to around 2.7% for the current year and 2% next year. So, the interesting part about this is you'll see the adopted budget for the current year is $101.7 million, and the projected for next year is 99.1. So, we are dialing that back based on the signs that we are seeing in the economy. This is consolidated tax. This is the same slide that I showed you last time, but we do have the extra data point of February. This, we don't receive this until two months behind, so February is the latest data point that we have, and you can see that it's trending below last year and below budget. For the year, we are currently sitting at about 1% above last year's numbers, and as I said, I do believe that, as do other local agencies, as soon as the weather warms up, we will see that rebound a little bit. Obviously, we're not going to make our budget this year, and that's why we have made our projections as such based on the current trend. Property tax history has been trending anywhere from 6% to 8%. We really saw a pretty big leap this year. Year-over-year change is 8.5%. These numbers come to us from the state, which they get those numbers, projections from the assessor's office. We really saw a lot of new growth in this number, so we were at the 3% cap for residential and the 6% cap for commercial, and we even saw that, I'm sorry, 3% and 8% for commercial. And we see our growth is actually at 8.5%, and that is because of the new growth that we're seeing in the area. We look at the expense overview. Salary and benefits are the largest portion of the general fund, approximately 80% of the general fund is salary and benefits. That's mostly police and fire, they're about 60% of the total personnel that we have, and so 80% of our total budget is salary and benefits. That continues to grow, as, as you know, with inflation, with the collective bargaining agreements, and then also with the PERS, which is the retirement system. New general fund revenue, this was a new slide that we showed last year, and I liked it so much, I thought I'd bring it back to you to, to really show you where the new revenue comes in and then where it goes... comes in, and then where it goes out. So, this year, you'll see fees, licenses, and permits are up $9 million. That's franchise fees, mostly. We've had increases in electric rates and gas rates, and we get a percentage of that as the city, and so when those go up. Also, when you have a really cold winter, we get more franchise fees as well, because the usage goes up too. You'll see property tax there, 6 million up, that's that 8.5% increase in property tax. And those are the two big numbers that you'll see there. Charged for services is the 3%, is the percent business license for those fees. And so those, we are seeing those increase as well, because it's based on gross revenue for the businesses, and we are seeing an increase in those as well. Intergovernmental revenue is down almost 3 million, that is the difference between the consolidated tax. So, as I showed in that previous slide, consolidated tax, we're actually projecting next year's budget is actually lower than the current year budget. So, overall, we're looking at a total change of $23 million in tech, in new revenue, in increase in the budget. And really, most of that is going to employee benefits and salary and wages. The biggest piece of that being employee benefits, you see that in the chart, and that's due to that PERS or the retirement system increase that goes into effect July 1st. And then salary and wages, that includes the collecting bar, collective bargaining agreement implementation of any changes that go into effect as of July 1st as well. So those are the two main areas where most of the increase is taken up by that. So that, for that reason, we are not recommending any other adds to the general fund, other than the establishment of that turnout replacement program. We look at the general fund 10-year forecast, this was updated based on the new revenue calculations, and, and the new salary and wage calculations, if we had any adjustments there as well. And so, what you see here is that the top line is the revenues, that's that gray line at the top, revenues, and then we have all of the expenditures kind of broken out. Salary and wages, again, are the biggest bar on there, so that's your green bar. And then, you can see that revenues exceed the expenditures, so that tells you that you have a balanced budget. In fiscal year '23 estimated, it shows the revenues kind of cutting into that little bar, and that's because we have carryforwards from the prior year that we're paying for. And so, this compares current year revenues to current year expenses, and in the estimated column, you do have carryforwards. This is another 10-year forecast, to show the total fund balance, to show that we want to stay around 16%. Council did adopt a resolution that says up to 25%. Legally, in arrests, we have to maintain a 4% fund balance, and we want to really get to the point, with this current budget, we would be adopting a 15% fund balance, and we'd like to get to 16%. 16% is the approximate two months of operating expenses for the city, and that's typical for a city to be around that 16% mark, it's a really good spot to be, as far as cash on hand, and being able to fund your current liabilities. That's the end of the general fund. Do you want to take questions?
Yeah, that sounds good. All right. Councilwoman Doerr, do you have any more questions?
No.
No? Okay. Councilwoman Ruckus, three minutes.
So, in the past, we've received at this hearing, a memo of, you know, questions and information that council requested. Do you have in, I didn't see that come through, do you have other, rather than the overview, do you have specific questions that you're answering for more information that the council asked for?
I'm not sure what you're asking for here.
Like, the org chart, I think that was something that was asked for, the information whether or not we were, how we were billing for the fire, you know, movements, I know those were, you know, transports, I know those were some questions I asked, and usually, in the past, we've received a summary of all the, you know, additional information. Do you, do you have any of that?
The org charts are in the back.
Okay.
I did forget to mention that at the beginning.
Yeah, I just got this, I even looked last night, it just came today, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I appreciate all the work that the team does, and I know, because the council compressed the hearings, we're, you know, on the back of everyone's clever shirts there, you know, one day was omitted, so we are not doing this as much as we have in the past. But, the org charts are in here, okay.
Yes, they are. And circled are the new positions that are being proposed. So, last time with your binder, you had the same exact org charts. The new additions for this time in the org chart, you will see circles around the 14 positions that are being proposed here. So you'll see where they kind of flow within those.
One thing I want to ask you about is, when did you get the most recent C-Tax reports, and for what month was that?
February is the last one that we just received, and we received it right at the end of April, so we just got it.
And how'd you, how'd that trend, how'd that trend to budget?
It was under budget, as I showed in this one slide here, I'll go back, just so we can see.
Yeah, I can tell if that was aggregate or not.
It's actually under budget. Currently, for the current year, year, year-to-date, it is 1% above last year, is right where we're trending.
But how much did that month miss budget?
Um, I don't have that in front of me. I know it was 10% below last year.
Okay, and I think you were projecting just a 4%, so 6% under, sounds about right?
Probably.
Yeah. So you revised your C-Tax, which I think is wise, but what I'm seeing is you're augmenting that, presumably to balance with new information that you think you're going to get a property tax increase. And I want to know what you're basing that information on, because I thought, and we had a meeting in between, that property tax was set, and there wasn't going to be any new information. You've already gotten your information from property tax, you know, you've already gotten your second installment. So what new information did you get to jump up property tax more than it's ever jumped up before for Next FY?
Thank you for that question, that's a great question. Property tax, we don't actually get that final number from the state until March 25th. So when we had our last hearing, I did not have the final numbers from the state on that. They actually have, the county runs, runs the bills, and actually gives that number to the state, and then they provide a number this, for the new growth portion of it. So when I build the budget up to that point where we met in March, I can anticipate pretty much everything except the new growth. And so that's really where you're seeing that new number, is in the new growth from the state on that.
And what's Washoe County and Sparks projecting property tax, Next FY? Have you checked with them?
They're about the same as we are, they're on everything.
Eight and a half?
It's interesting that we are all trending, trending very similarly for both C-Tax and property tax.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Vicki. I have a question on the 14 proposed positions.
Yes.
Are the proposed positions in each category tied to a specific fund? So I have some concerns that we don't see anything in, for the police, for RPD, as far as new positions, but then we have nine in infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability. Are those nine positions tied to like a B-FAC fund, or how, are they movable around, or how does that work?
Thank you for that question. Yes, they are tied to other funding sources, not the general fund, because we do not have capacity right now, based on our conservative projections for this year, to add new positions to the general fund. We do have some capacity in other funds to add positions, and so that's where the city manager did look to do that.
So we couldn't take half of the nine in maintenance and give them to RPD?
No, it's a different funding source.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Vice Mayor Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to, Ms. Van Buren, first, thank you for some of the changed slides. Just each year, I think you have been able to refine the presentations in a way that takes into account the feedback that we've given in prior years, so I think that's been very helpful. I want to start maybe first with this full-time employee addition slide. It's, it's an analysis of fiscal year '20 through '24. I think it's your slide number 12. And maybe just a general comment, and then it'll dovetail with one of the comments by Councilmember Taylor. So this slide is instructive for me, because it answers the question about the council's priorities over a period of time. And here, the priority certainly is, obviously, public safety, and I think that's been a consistent theme. And I know that Councilmember Taylor is, and, and we all are struggling for a way to figure out, how do we add to our public safety resources, even in a down economy? So, I suppose my question really is, what is the long-term way for us to build sustainability into those things? Because I don't know if your 85 persons is just really backfilling retirements. I, I can't tell if it's like in addition to what we already have. I know you said that we have wisely gotten to a higher number in the fire side of the equation, but I know that, you know, the mayor has, for a long time, championed at least adding another battalion company. I mean, I'm trying to figure that out, on the police side, each year, we've tried to add maybe a complement of eight or 16 officers. So how do we, how do we deal with that? Like, what is the long-term fix there?
Sure. Well, I mean, outside of legislative action to change property tax or C-Tax distribution, we're really locked into those. We can obviously look for other sources of funding too, like fire has with their emergency medical transport program, they're able to add bodies that are cost neutral. I don't know that police has that opportunity, but we certainly can look at grants, we can look at other grant funding opportunities, and maybe increasing some of, some of the fees that we charge as far as, that support the general fund as well, through the fee schedule. Those are some of the opportunities that we have, but I think we are going to be limited in what we can do, because our, our resources are very much locked.
Well, I appreciate your being realistic about it. I, I think part of the thing is, electeds oftentimes overpromise and underdeliver, right? And so that's not the goal. The goal is to be honest and transparent with our thought process. Can you tell me, are we pursuing any of the safer grants in, in the fire side of the universe? Are, are there other kinds of grants that we could be pursuing there?
We are, and we are pursuing some of the safer grants in the police as well. And so, anytime we can get that grant funding, it's a way to build it into the budget, to the point where we can project and move that into the budget permanently. And so, those are really good opportunities for us.
Well, thank you again for slide number 12, I think it was particularly informative.
Of course. And just to answer your question, Vice Mayor Reese, you had a question on the public safety, that 85, those are new positions. And so, and that would be between police and fire, and a number of those are police as well.
Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah. Picking up on the same theme as my colleagues, I wanted to just turn to page 11, and, and then back to page 12. So on page 11, I just want to make sure, can we just go through each box? So, in the upper left, you have eight for traffic and sewer maintenance. So, what is traffic? Is that?
That is for the street traffic signals.
Signals, okay.
And these are actually funded out of the street, street fund, and we will go into more detail in these, as we get to them. I just wanted to kind of highlight them here, but I do have more detail later.
It's not positions, it's traffic signals.
No, these are positions. These are eight additional positions between traffic and then sewer maintenance, so.
But is traffic, police traffic, is traffic improving roads? I'm unclear.
Traffic is the maintenance of the streetlights, so.
But you need a position.
Personnel to maintain those, yes.
Okay, I understand. And then, this project coordinator, is that a position or a contract?
It is a position, and it would be for utility services in the sewer fund.
Okay, I'm just going to go through these really quick, okay. Public works training, sewer capacity, so Tom Wharf consultants, those are consultants, right?
Correct.
Open space management contract, that's a contract, not a position.
Correct.
Then over to the upper right, you have two positions, you said, but I didn't see them written down here. It's unclear.
There's the co-compliance, it's under co-compliance, they have the training and development manager and management assistant.
Okay, and that's one, okay. And then, under arts, parks, history, are there any positions?
No positions.
And then, under public safety, you have the three.
Yes.
Okay. And then, turning to the next page, to, to cue off my colleague's comments, I think it would be good, and even if you're not making more presentations to us, to come in with a chart like this, but to show the budget, you know, what fund they're being funded out of. Because that doesn't show up on the org chart, I don't think, right?
It shows under which department.
Right, but not what fund.
And as we go through, I have.
Right, but I'm just looking for one summary chart like this, but it would just have like the department, the position, and where it's funded from. And then we'd see these 14, right?
Yes.
So I'm a little confused, you mentioned 85. And where, where is that?
On public safety, if you look at the total, across, all the way across, so over five years.
Oh, over five years, yes, yes.
We've added 85 positions within public safety.
Okay, so my next question is about this. If you look at the bottom, from 20, FY '20, 42 people, then eight, then 75, 71, 14. So we're, we're like this, you know, bigger years and smaller years.
And mostly, that's due to the pandemic.
Okay. But my question is this, if, if we have funds coming in, it's equally for you and our manager, if we have funds coming in, and you say, oh, we've recovered, we, we now can add more positions. You know, last year, we had 71, this year 14, so I could see you adding some in between. I want to make sure that you bring those to us in the quarterly amendment, budget amendments, and that you identify them during that time, so we know what we're adding.
Absolutely.
And what fund it's coming from.
And Councilmember Doerr, you make a good point. If things turn out better than what we think, if we're, you know, we don't slide into more of the flattening like we're predicting, and things come out better, we do come back quarterly, so you have that opportunity to add to the budget, if at some point, we can do that, absolutely.
Well, I'd just like to do it in the formal quarterly update, versus sort of this month, the other month, another month. You know, it would be much helpful to me to have it presented quarterly, and have us approve it, you know, because it's the one thing, the biggest thing in our budget, is the people. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from council?
I have some.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ruckus, three minutes.
Since I only get three minutes, I'm going to ask four very specific questions, and hope that they all get answered, but I'm happy to repeat them. If we could bring up slide 18, seems that you've increased the amount of property tax that you're projecting to 8.5%. If you look back, that's a jump higher than we've ever had before, it, on the chart, and it is also an increase from what you were projecting in March. You said you received new data points from the state? I'd really like to understand what those are. That's question number one, because the data point for me is looking at the Board of Equalization Agendas, and I'm seeing a lot of land developers come in for rework on their assessments, presumably because the markets turn, and they're not bringing product to the market. That's something I learned a long time ago, is a good indicator of local property tax thoughts. Mr. Thornley sent the council, copied the council on a memo that I think went out to staff. It was about the PERS split, as related to when the COLAs go up. And we all know how monumental that was, but he highlights that the city is evaluating whether the universal wage reduction should be ongoing practice for non-NB PERS compensable wages in the future, for all overtime eligible employees. Presumably, that would be the city taking more of the cut than our past practice of the employees doing that. I'd like to know who's thinking of that, where are we thinking about it, and is it thought about in this budget? The third one is, do we have any openers in our current CBAs for downturn in economic conditions? In the past years, we have, but I don't know if we have any in these present ones, and I'd like to know what those are. And then I appreciate the, the question about the safer, and going forward, I think it was your last slide, the 10-year projection, do we have any positions on safer grant that we're supposed to bring onto the general fund in, in out years, and what are those, and how much are those? I'd just like to say, also, the question about coming back quarterly for augmentations, it seems to me, the practice with Mr. Thornley has been, we come back for quarterly augmentations to augment the budget for positions he's already created, sometimes they didn't even exist, they weren't budgeted. So it's really almost a rectifying of an action he's taken in adding positions. I don't, I think that gives up the council's budgetary authority, I think the council needs to, if positions are added from what we close out, those are done by the council, no one's hired, no one's advertised, a new position is not created, no one's up, you know. know, demoted or down. Those quarterly augmentations need to be in action of the council, not an administrative, you know, blessing of what's occurred. That is giving away too much budgetary authority, and I think it's very problematic. So if you can answer those four questions, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. Your first question was regarding property tax. And again, those property tax numbers come from the Department of Taxation. We have to use their property tax numbers for our budget. Otherwise, we have to write a letter explaining why we think that their numbers are not correct. So their numbers tie to our budget exactly. We get that number from the Department of Taxation.
Are they disaggregated down to our level, or are they across the board?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Is it eight and a half percent statewide, or does it say eight and a half for the city of Reno?
No, it depends, it depends on your properties, it depends on the, the amount of abatements, it depends on everything. They have a whole formal process that they provide.
So they say Reno's at eight and a half, Sparks at 8.2, for example.
Whatever, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Now, the memo about who is thinking?
And then the PERS split memo, that's an ongoing conversation that HR and the city manager and something that's going on. Nothing has been decided, it's just a conversation that's going on at this point. Nothing has been factored into this budget for that as far as that conversation.
It's a budgeting conversation that should occur here, in my view. Okay, it's policy, it's, so, you know, we always want to do by our employees, but I don't like the idea that, you know, conversations are ongoing and the council hasn't been a part of those conversations in an open, transparent view. Okay, about the CBA openers?
And the CBA openers, I do believe at least a few of them do have the opener in them for an economic downturn. I'm not sure if all of them do or not, that would be more of an HR question.
I'm going to ask specifically to see those and understand where we're at. I think we need a pulse on that. Ms. Santoya is standing up behind you, and you could answer maybe the safer one, and she can answer.
And then the safer, we do have a safer grant for, that we're in the, it will be in the third year of it during the 24 cycle. And so that safer grant will expire in October of '24, and it's one of those ones where it comes on 100%, 75, and it kind of decreases. As far as our projections, we've projected it forward that we're continuing to pay that full after that point, and we still have a balanced budget going forward. So we factor that in, yes.
Have you parked money for those?
We have, we set aside money as far as, I don't know if you remember, council used to only approve $2 million for capital, and we increased that up to $4 million. We have it $5 million this year. So we're using that extra money that we would have been paying for these positions and parking it to capital. But ongoing, I don't anticipate even taking away from that because that is part of the capital maintenance program that I'm putting forward and trying to build that program. And so as far as factoring, as far as the 10-year forecast, we have capacity to bring those on full time.
Okay.
All right.
And Ms. Santoya with the openers?
I'm going to cut you off, Councilwoman Breckus.
Of course.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
I have just a couple of questions. Ms. Van Buren, are we looking at the legislature this session and following any of the changes that are being proposed there? Do we anticipate any changes, say, to property tax? I know there are a number of different bills that are working their way through the legislature, some of which have survived the first House passages of reading. So I'm just wondering if any of those would positively affect us at the city of Reno, if you know?
I know they look at property tax kind of every year. I don't think that this is going to be a year where we see any of those changes that are going to have a positive impact, but obviously, I do know that it is a topic that comes up every year at the legislature.
Well, and of course, as to the labor agreements, the law already provides for reopeners that are triggered by a certain set of economic conditions, even though those might not be included in a contract. Some of the contracts try to spell out or more positively define it, or define it differently than state law does, but we already have openers, reopeners for economic-related conditions as a function of Nevada state law. So I'm not worried about any of those. What are our colleagues in other cities doing, or counties, I suppose, either one, with the PERS increase? Like, is it all over the map? Some are pushing it on to the employees, others are taking on their own. What are you seeing across the board?
I think that's probably a better question for our HR director here, because she's been working on this with other agencies, so I'm going to let her handle that.
I appreciate that, and thank you for coming to the floor. Appreciate that.
No worries. Good morning, Norma Santoyo, HR Director. I'd be happy to answer that. We have been working closely just to stay connected with other HR directors in the, in the state of Nevada. Most of them are applying the split as directed by NRS 286, which allows, which says that the split is borne 50% by the employee and 50% by, by the employer. We have received indication from City of Henderson that the employer there will be picking up the employee cost, but generally, that's the only one we've heard from that is picking up the employee cost.
And has your office had any communications with the PERS folks just about? Like, it seems very odd that it came out of the blue, like, PERS made this big decision, and, and we're all reaping the consequences of it, because I don't think it was anticipated. So what, does PERS care? Do they, are they just our way or the highway kind of approach? How does it happen?
Sure. So the PERS is governed strictly by Nevada statute 286. They also have very strict guidelines on actuarial reviews on the performance of our pension plan. Per NRS, they have to conduct an actuarial review, excuse the language there, on a even number year that dictates what the rate setting will be on an odd number year, and that's spelled out in the statute.
Okay.
So it has gone through the law, legally required process, and then the board at Nevada Public Employees Board makes that determination typically in November of the odd, even number year, November or December for rates set for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, while she's up, could she answer the question about the CBA openers for downturns?
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Eber, and then we'll get back to Councilwoman Breckus since you're over.
I have a question on slide two, or sorry, 12. So on these new positions, are any of these for code enforcement?
Yes, two of them are.
Okay, and what category do those fall under? I'm sorry.
Those fall under the economic and community development.
It's on the previous page, I think.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
It's column 20, it's fiscal year '24, that first two.
Okay.
Those are your code.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, Ms. Santoya, what are the openers for economic downturn? Which agreements are those right now?
Yes, so I can't speak, Norma Santoyo, HR Director, again. I don't recall specific language because we do have 10 labor agreements. However, there is NRS 288 specifically allow, provide some guardrails when an agency is experiencing economic downturn. So there are already reopeners at the Nevada law level.
So having been on this council for a lot of years now, I know that, and I know how those ride out, but I also know that we've dropped specific reopeners in our contracts. And for example, one may be, and I think they were in, one of the public safety ones at one time, if you see two or three turns, downturns, quarters of GDP, maybe it was, or it might even be more nuanced and specific to our revenues, like C-Tax, which we've now seen three months of C-Tax go down, you know, two projections. So rather than scare everyone and, you know, think about, we don't know, I'm going to ask specifically for that to come in a memo to council. I recently found that all the memos to council are, are being shown up on some, on the website, which is good, because I think a lot has not been going up there. So I'm going to ask for a memo before adoption to understand if we have any openers outside of this broad statute language currently in those, to understand where we're at. Because I think a time when you haven't been making C-Tax to budget, you're downturning, you're projecting just a 1% growth in C-Tax for next year, it is a time to have that on our horizon. And I, I hope we're not going there, but we've been there before in my memory. So do you think you can get those to us?
I'm happy this week to send to the council a memo outlining language in each CBA as well as the NRS 288.
Excerpts from those. Thank you.
Come on, unless there are any other questions? We're going to move on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to move on to the street fund. In the street fund, we have five full-time positions being proposed here for council's consideration. The traffic signal mechanic, a traffic signal technician, and a traffic signal maintenance supervisor. We currently have five and a half employees to maintain the traffic signals in the city, and the city of Reno currently maintains 320 signaled intersections for the city. And some of those, we may own some of them that we may have interlocals with Nevada Department of Transportation or Washoe County to do those. But when you think about, we have 320 signaled intersections, and we have approximately five employees currently to do that. This would be to expand this program and to actually start what's considered a maintenance program for them. So we wouldn't be just going out just when something breaks, we would actually be maintaining and continuing to keep them from breaking in the future. We have a maintenance worker three on here. This is a street sweeper operator, and this is to increase service. Currently, we sweep the city streets, all city streets, once a month, and this would add center line sweeping and the medians sweeping as well. So it would increase service by adding this one. We're increasing the training budget, they had a need for additional training for staff. I believe it's only around $15,000. It's not a large dollar amount, but it's large dollars as far as training and bringing that increased knowledge to the staff. We also have on here an open space management contract, and this would be a contract for the management of the open space along the southeast connector, and that's approximately 150 acres, and that includes the, the horse fencing and the vegetation and the waterways of that area to do that open space management. You will see this again on the sewer slide as well, because that cost for that particular contract is split 50/50 between streets and sewer. And in total, I just want to, in total, for all of these items, about $1 million. When you look at the street fund fund balance, I want to counsel to see how these, how these additions will add, or how they're going to project out into the future. So for fiscal year '23, you can see that we have cash, any fund balance, that's pretty high. It's based on the projects that are out there. So as we've talked about many times before, capital projects that are really large in streets and sewer, they go, they don't necessarily start in one year and end in one year. So that's going to smooth out that fund balance over the years. But for this particular purpose, we budget it based on total projects starting in one year and anticipating they end in one year, although we know that doesn't really occur that way. But we want to show you that we can still meet the minimum fund balance requirements, and that that would be smoothed out over the years. And these projections going forward have a really hefty capital investment into your neighborhood streets in here as well. When we move on to the building fund, there are two positions that are proposed here, and they're both in code compliance. And this would be a team for code compliance for the commercial buildings to ensure that developments are staying up to code after they've been built. So this would be a new program to ensure that they don't just get inspected once they're built, they continue to have inspections and make sure that they're up to code going in the future. And that's approximately $342,000, and this would be out of the building fund. When you look at the building fund cash, again, looking at in the past and in the future here, we have a little bit of a dip in the ending cash. You can see that starting in fiscal year '23. That's an anticipated potential remodel of the second floor. That has not come to council or been approved yet, it's just something that's kind of in the works. We go ahead and put that in as far as an estimate, just to make sure that if that's something council wanted to do in the future, we can see where the cash would land. We're starting to get back to that 50% of the prior year expenses line, which is, that's the line that tells us when we can raise those rates for the fees that we're charging for services. And so we've had an excess of cash in this building fund for some time, so we've only been able to increase a lot of those fees by CPI, because it's based on how much cash we have available in the fund. We look at the sewer fund, we have four positions that are being recommended in here. We have a lift station technician, a lift station crew helper, and a maintenance worker three. These are additional lift station personnel for maintenance, because the city's sewer capacity has grown and the need has grown to monitor that system as the city grows. We have a project coordinator, and this is to support the sewer planning team on the capacity analysis and such as the city grows as well. The training increase here, again, this was a split between streets and sewer, just a small amount, but a small amount in training really is a big amount in investment in the employees. The sewer capacity analysis is to expedite the sewer capacity response, to look at the capacity and the growth. Since we've had such a growth in infill development, this is a need that is out there right now that is to analyze that sewer capacity. We also have Tom Wharf, which is Truckee Meadow Water Reclamation Facility Consultants on here, and this is to look at the discharge permits, because we anticipate there may be a change in the water quality permit as far as what the regulations and the rules are on that. So in anticipation of that, this would bring on a consultant to figure out what those new requirements would be and how we would meet those. And then we have, again, that open space management contract, which is split between streets and sewer, and that's for the southeast connector. And in the sewer fund, that would be a total cost of $1.8 million. When you look at sewer cash balance, this cash balance fluctuate, it's based on the projects in there. Obviously, it's more of an evened-out flattened line versus this sharp, steep curves that you see in here a lot of times, but it is project-dependent, depending on the projects as they come online, large projects, we spend down the cash, save up cash, new projects come on, and so you can see it kind of fluctuate based on the capital within the sewer fund. And this is projected out until fiscal year '32, and again, shows that we're above, quite a bit above most of the time, the required reserves, depending on the year that we're doing the projects.
Can we stop right here, Madam Mayor, and ask questions?
Just a few more.
Okay, let's get through those, and then we'll come back for questions.
If we go into room tax, there's just a couple of things proposed in here in room tax. The annual public art repair and maintenance, this is a maintenance plan, again, this is really the focus of this budget, is the maintenance and replacement of the things that the city already has. Can't add a lot of positions, and we really can't add anything in the general fund, but we can build up some of these programs and make sure they're maintaining that what we have. And so this plan is an immediate need to repair and replace some of the murals and the artwork that needs maintenance. Some of the examples in this area are the Evelyn Mount, there's a mural on that wall at the Evelyn Mount Community Center that's been there for 23 years, that needs to be maintained and redone. Also, they're looking at potentially putting up some type of barriers at the Wells Avenue, at that circle where they have the art in that area next to the road there. That's been hit a couple times, is my understanding. So they're trying to maintain that area and, and make sure that the art is protected, and these funds would help that. Also in here is a public art master plan, Title 22 update. The last plan was done in 2002, and so that would include public meetings, hiring a consultant, input sessions, meetings with stakeholders and such, and then eventually, the Reno Municipal Code, Chapter 22, would come back to council to be updated based on that information. And in total, for these two items, there's $265,000 that's put forward for that. Room tax, we've talked about this too. In the pandemic, that dip you see there, room tax went down because businesses were closed, casinos were closed, hotels were closed. But typically, it runs around $3 million in room tax in any year, and that's been consistent for the last about five years. been consistent for the last about five years. So room tax is a special revenue fund. It means the use of those funds is restricted to a specific purpose. In this case, council has discretion on fifty percent, and that's for tourism. And then fifty percent goes to parks and recreation for park maintenance. The items that were previously presented to council were items that council has approved in the past, such as Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, Leager Theater, that would be the debt payment on the Leager Theater, the Arts Commission. And then council recently approved the activation coordinator position from the room tax, and so you'll see that included. The additional items are in the bottom right-hand corner. That's the public art repair and maintenance, two hundred thousand, and then the master plan update at sixty-five thousand. I have some summaries of just all of the capital that's included within the budget. Sewer fund, one hundred and thirteen million, street fund, twenty-four million. And as I said, your Director of Public Works and your Director of Utility Services are going to come up following me to go through all those projects in a lot more detail, so you'll know what's going on with those. We have general maintenance, facility maintenance, five million dollars. This is that new program that we're starting toward supporting the facilities that we have, maintaining those facilities, and starting a replacement plan. This is the start of that plan. And this is based on that new book that you received last time that shows the condition index of each facility, shows the usage of the facilities. So we're ranking each facility, and we're tracking the needs of the facilities based on that. The fire apparatus program, we have three point three million dollars in funding going to that. Two-dollar surcharge, there's three million in that. That's for your event center and your downtown bowling stadium. We have the special adloreum capital tax at one point eight million. Those funds are dedicated to public safety-type items and equipment, remodels. For the most part, we've used those funds for radio replacement for public safety, and then for also for forensic evidence storage as well, buying evidence storage equipment for PD. We have that retract capital fund. I was recently at council with an item with the augmentation to close out the debt fund that was paid off. And now these funds will go forward as a capital replacement maintenance fund for the retract area that needs a lot of work in those trenches. There's one point seven million there. We have police facility impact fees of a million dollars. Those are to be used toward the new public safety center. And then park districts, two hundred and twenty thousand, event center, a hundred thousand, that is the ballroom that we have. And then SCBA's, these are for the fire department. And again, this is another program similar to the fire apparatus replacement program, but it's for the self-contained breathing apparatus, that's breathing units that fire uses. And so instead of trying to find one-time money to fund this all the time, this should be a program as well. And so this is built-in funding that we actually started last year that will continue this year. So again, another program that ensures the sustainability of the budget moving forward. When you look at that general facility maintenance, I really wanted to focus on this, because this was the really new area that went with that facility index report and that new look at the capital in the book that council received in the May workshops. We have three point seven million dollars put toward buildings and facilities for those maintenance and repairs there. We have parks, seven hundred thousand, parking lots, which are tracked separately in that book as well, four hundred thousand, and fire stations, two hundred thousand.
But you said you were going to stop here.
I just have a couple more.
Oh, you keep saying that.
Just a couple. This is it, I promise. Well, actually, I do have a, I thought I did have, I've got a few more.
Whoa.
But we can stop here if you would like. Ongoing capital projects, I just really want to highlight a lot of the really big things we have going on. We may have a flat budget, and we may have, you know, have to dial things back a little bit as we wait to see what the economy's going to do. But I really want to highlight the maintenance plans that we're getting in place, that we're continuing to fund. And I want to highlight the ongoing big projects that we have going on. We have this public safety center for police. This is a project that's a huge project, approximately seventy-five million dollar project, and it's going to be up and running next year. So I wanted to highlight that. Council has really put the priorities out there so that we're able to fund these, figure out ways to address these needs of the community and make this happen. So it's just a great thing to highlight, I think, with the budget process. Another project, the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Facility, again, will be online at the end of next year. Just something, super proud to be a part of that and proud for council to give us the direction to move forward on these things. The National Bowling Stadium, the mural that's going in there, another project that's ongoing and will continue into next year. We also have the Fire Department Central Station Design that's ongoing, and we're considering figuring out the funding sources for that as we move forward with the budget. We'll figure out how we're going to move forward and what that looks like, to bring that back to council as well. City Hall, the seismic retrofit ongoing, scheduled to be done later this fall. Making facilities safer for employees, making this building safer, and bringing it up to standards. So another huge project. Another project, Paradise Park, big project that's going on. So all of these things are projects that aren't necessarily included in this budget, but they're ongoing, continuing from the prior items that council has approved previously. So just a lot of great things going on. And then ARPA funding, the Reno Tennis Center, we have a lot of ARPA funding that's out there too. And those projects are going to go on for the next couple of years. And so we're going to see a lot of benefit to the community from all of these projects that council has put forward. The next thing I wanted to talk about was kind of, was maintenance and replacement programs that we have. Facility maintenance is the thing where I was talking about. That's the area we want to start focusing on going forward, because we have fleet. You can see that fleet's the green area, and we've really started to fund that over time. We have a program in place. Fire apparatus, we have a program in place. It started very small, but in twenty twenty, it really came on, and you can see that big pink piece getting larger there. We have parks maintenance, again, not really funded and increased over the years. And so that area and the facility maintenance are the areas that we would really focus to improve and grow those on the end. Wanted to give you an idea of where all this, this money goes, and what it's actually doing, and why this is so important for the city. So fire maintains its own fleet, they have their own fleet shop, and they have a total apparatus of fifty-three, and it's split between engines and brush trucks and other vehicles. That's where the fleet's apparatus program is going to fund these. The average age of the apparatus is shown here. So we were up over sixteen years in fiscal year twenty. It's not quick to come online to decrease, even though we started the program, I believe, a little bit, I think we believe we started it in two thousand and nineteen, because these apparatus take so long, once you order them, take a couple of years to even get them online. So we're only starting to see now the effects of getting that program in place. So you see, the average age now is down to about twelve years, and the industry standard is about ten. So really, this, having this program in place, this is what those dollars are doing, and this is what council has enabled us to do, to bring that in line with the industry standard. The replacement program, this is showing the annual funding. In two thousand and seventeen, we hardly had any money going to this program. It increased, and now going forward, since we have it built in, we have plans in our ten-year projections to continue to fund this going forward. This shows you the average age of the apparatus as we continue to fund this program based on the replacement schedule that fire has come up with, as far as the age and the timing of replacing those. And so you can see, by the time we get to fiscal year thirty, we are trending right at the ten-year mark for the average age of the equipment. When you look at citywide fleet, fleet is everything other than fire. So fire maintains their stuff, fleet is everything else. Departments contribute to the fleet fund, and they're charged to, charged based on the type of vehicle that they have and the maintenance that's required for that vehicle and the replacement value. Most of it, sixty-three percent going into that fleet fund, comes from the general fund, because it's for the police vehicles. Twenty-three percent comes from the street fund. When you look at the city fleet, we have seven hundred and twenty-two vehicles in city fleet. Most of those are police at forty-four percent, and then maintenance and operations at thirty-one percent. Your fleet staff did a comparison that I liked, and so we put it on here as far as commercial shop rates. So you can see the shop rates for city of Reno are less as compared to other agencies or other businesses across the area. So what this tells you is we're getting the best bang for our dollar. So the shop rate to do it in-house is much cheaper compared to if we were to outsource it to these other shops. So we're really able to maximize the value that we're getting out of the repairs. When you look at the annual funding, starting in two thousand and sixteen, we were only, not even quite at six million. And then as we go out, going to the future, we're looking at fiscal year twenty-four, we're around ten million dollars. This does include personnel and replacement and maintenance for the vehicles. And then the average age of the fleet, you can see, is up around ten years in the early fiscal year twenty sixteen. And as we move out, we're getting more around the eight-year range. And as you know, from even personal vehicles, they require a lot more repair and maintenance the older they get. So we're putting a lot more money and effort into them. Also, the older they get, it's harder to find replacement parts. It's harder to actually repair them as they get older. So you don't want to have a fleet that is aging. And so during the last recession, this was an area that was cut, so the age of the vehicles really went up. And what that equates to is we did a lot more maintenance and repair during this timeframe. As we can replace those vehicles, put more money into replacing them and getting new vehicles online, it actually cuts down on the maintenance needs of those. Citywide for fleet, I wanted to show you the ending cash balance. So salary and benefits and service and supplies are, salary and benefits are the green part. So the biggest part in fleet is service and supplies, and then the capital outlay, the purchasing of the new vehicles. And so to replace the older vehicles, ending cash. At one point, back in the, prior to, the previous recession, there was really no money in this fund. It was kind of paycheck to paycheck, as you say. It's, and now we have a fund balance in there that maintains around four million dollars.
Wait, wait, I don't think I can comprehend anymore.
We're up thirty slides.
It's a lot of information.
We're up thirty slides. Let's pause here, please, Mayor.
A few, quite a few. It's a lot of information.
Yeah, that's not a lot. And I don't know, I mean, I'm here, my calendar has us here till four o'clock today. So I hope we get, I'll get a chance. Okay, great, great, great. So I'll start with slide twenty-four, and that's the street funding additions. And I generally, you know, I know the needs are so great, so I don't like to question, you know, when bringing on operation. But when I see traffic signal mechanics, add-ons, and that, you know, I wonder if something like that, or the technicians, if we're missing the mark on addressing what I hear from where I sit is a big need, which is addressing neighborhood traffic conflict issues, a walkability coordinator, a traffic calming coordinator. That's what I'm looking for and would like to see the ad, and like to hear from the department why we're not getting there. And I've, and it's frustrating to me, and I think we need to go there. I mean, I have a lot of issues with RTC and where, what they should be doing, but, you know, as it is, they're not doing local roads, and I'm hearing too many local roads, and now I'm seeing more traffic mechanics. And this is why I voted against an agreement to go up, send people up to Incline to do their traffic signals, because I don't want us to do contract for services in Incline. I want us at the corner of Sharon and Marsh, where I get constituents all my, all the time asking me why we don't have sidewalks there, and why we have a grade there, and why we have deteriorating pavement, and all over, all over town. So that is a problem for me with that budget, and I think this is the time to make a different So if staff wants to say, why are we bringing more mechanics for signals, and why aren't we doing someone who's focused on the pedestrian environment, the pedestrian experience? Because from where I sit, that's not getting addressed.
Oh, did you want to take that? Sure.
For the record, Travis Druel, Director of Maintenance and Operations. These, the mechanic and technician positions that you see here, along with the supervisor, this is strictly to take care of our existing infrastructure we have right now. The work the guys are doing, just to kind of rattle off some information for you, we have, the city has twenty-six hundred decorative streetlights they maintain. They have three hundred and twenty signalized intersections throughout the city. And again, up in Tahoe as well and other areas. Two hundred and six rectangular rapid flashing beacons, either RFB flashing beacons we put up around the school zones, other high pedestrian use areas. Twelve hundred signalized or streetlights that are also in these signalized intersections. The staff that are currently assigned to this division cannot provide any kind of preventative maintenance. They are way behind on work. They absolutely do not have the bandwidth to take on anything else. And as you guys are aware, we keep bringing in more subdivisions. We keep bringing in, or areas that have infrastructure essentially with them. The, what we're trying to do is transition to a point, for really a public safety perspective, that we are able to start providing the preventive maintenance that's necessary. Again, we are not able at this point to do anything other than just reactive maintenance. When a streetlight gets called out, gets called into us that it's, the bulb's not functioning, that's reactive. We don't have the bandwidth to be able to go and do streetlight assessments like we used to in the, in the past. So this, this staff here that we're requesting is literally to get us to a point that we can provide preventive maintenance on this public safety infrastructure.
Yeah, I can, wait, can we just, because I think you make a valid point, but I also think one doesn't predicate on, on the other. And this is why we're talking about this in budget, and figure out what does that look like, where you want it to be. I don't think that this is exactly saying one doesn't get the other. I think you're just saying there's a need for it, correct?
That, that's exactly what I'm saying. This, this from a maintenance and operations perspective is what's needed to get us to a level that we're not just providing the reactive maintenance that we see currently. For what you're, you're requesting for the other positions, the coordinators and so on, that's a, that's a different, that's a completely different bucket than what we're talking about here. This is just to maintain what we have.
I think the street fund had, had a traffic coordinator many years ago, a walkable, you know, traffic calming coordinator in that budget. It got riffed. This is the time to think priorities. I'm in no way advocating for another position in, because I think frankly, we go deep into this, you know, more bank failures or whatever, the economy slows. I think, I think we're going to go into, you know, attrition. Maybe not next FY, but maybe the one after. So I'm not advocating for that. I just want to call attention to my priority. I know these guys are working hard. I said, don't send them up to Incline. Sorry, Washoe County, you're on your own. Okay? Because I didn't think that was prudent. So that's what I wanted.
So where, so let's, let's address that question. So I would ask the city manager, where would something that, like that fall in line? Because I think the council would like to see that as a priority. And then also, we're doing some work over at RTC, where we do believe there should be set-asides for street maintenance on some of these traffic signals. You know, just some of the things that I think have probably gone on way too long, and there's always been this sort of fight, where, where does this go? But, and I don't know if maybe, I would imagine that that would fall under us here when it comes to a traffic safety coordinator. But I, again, I want to just reiterate, I don't think one predicate- But I, again, I want to just reiterate, I don't think one predicates on the other. This is a totally different ask and need, correct?
That is correct. And yes, you're right. There's discussions being had right now to create more of a regional program where it's fully expected they would have those kind of positions within that body at that time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, city manager.
Madam Mayor, you're of course correct that these are not mutually exclusive conversations. This reflects an existing need with regard to maintenance of the facilities that are already in place. I think pedestrian safety is a priority, both of the public works crew and the streets crew and everyone who touches that issue. My initial reaction to the ask is that, yes, I think we would turn to this particular fund with respect to looking at that position. I can imagine some other scenarios where other funds contributed to that work. You know, that said, it really just highlights the natural tension in the streets fund of how much maintenance do we pay for versus how much capital do we put into, you know, neighborhood streets? Those are choices that we can make. And of course, you know, the team that's sitting here now with the help from finance can build one of these handy charts that says if we, you know, do all of these things and add those positions, here's what the runout looks like and here's how sustainable those decisions are. It's of course within...
And one obviously gets less than the other when we start to move those around.
That's it, right? It's really just a matter of prioritizing, do we want to take a run at this at the expense of putting more capital into paving streets and repairing streets in any given year?
And that, again, is where I think over at RTC, there should be a set-aside probably for all three when it comes to paving, traffic lights, those kinds of things. I think that that's gone on probably way too long and that some of that funding needs to be over here. So I would just ask my colleague who sits on the RTC with me, I'm sure you would be supportive to make sure that we can get some of that funding over here.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, the other day in my office move, my temporary office move, I came across a letter I wrote to the RTC in two thousand and fifteen calling for a set-aside program, okay, for maintenance. So it's a concept that's been out there, but we need to, you know, make decisions here. And I would say, you know, to put more pressure on RTC doing maintenance, let's take one of these maintenance positions and turn it into a traffic... neighborhood traffic coordinator and tell RTC, we need that set-aside this FY. They need to move quickly on it. Because I tell you, I think, and you know, the Reno Direct reports show it, is the neighborhood traffic calming issues are not getting addressed. They're not getting inventoried, they're not getting programmed. They usually fall up to a supervisor or a save officer to do a study. And I think our pedestrian safety outcomes, which are major crashes and PDAAS fatalities, obviously, are reflecting that. And we've got to get somewhere on this important public safety issue. So that's what I say for this budget.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might...
Yes, go ahead.
I think it would be... it would be my preference that we take these comments under advisement and we examine what the productivity cost of making that change would look like. Because I can't tell you today, and I don't know that Mr. Truill could tell you today, what the impact of saying we're going to hire one mechanic instead of two or we're not going to hire the tech. I don't know that we can tell you as we sit here today what the actual annualized impact of that decision is. And I think it would be better for us to come back to you, whether in a memo or in a final proposal, to say, these are the choices you're making. This is what the impact of the fund looks like. Here's how we could go about accomplishing these goals and prioritizing the wishes of the council.
And I think that would be welcomed because I would just say, coming back to the council, not in a memo, because I do think this is a priority for the council, but what exactly does that look like? How do we accomplish that? And that's why we have these budget discussions. All right. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Moving on to Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. Just following up on this conversation. So the point I made before about when you come back with ads, what I'm asking the manager to do is hear this request. And when you do come... if you do have more money, okay, prioritize the council asks equal to what the staff think their asks are. Maybe the staff would think, well, we need a third traffic signal technician. I'm just making this up. But I'm saying that you need to hear us and from our perspective, where we see some needs. So I'm not sure if you heard me there, but...
Yeah.
Okay. So on this same topic, I just want to be aware, if we were to include a person like this, where I have seen a lot of problems over the last nine years is that when we add new developments, we say, okay, you have a street. But what we don't understand is how that street interacts with the other streets, the cumulative impact on traffic, the steepness of the streets. And what that does is when we just say that's just fine to put in a very steep street, it has ancillary... I mean, subsequent impacts on our staff. So we have to plow that very steep street. We have to maintain it. We have to clear rocks from it. We have traffic safety from our police. So all of us get a lot of requests through Reno Direct to respond to the steep street, excuse me, steep street developments. And so I don't think that goes... I don't think that happens in planning. I don't think when those are being approved, anybody looks at what is the impact of this street on our whole organization, including council members, because we're the ones fielding all these calls. And I've talked before about some streets in my ward that, I mean, you could just pick Zolezi outside the county, so it doesn't... it's not in anybody's ward. It's a very steep street. But we have streets like Zolezi, very steep, and the speed on there, we have constant complaints, they're worried about dogs being hit, pedestrians being hit, and so on. So I really think somehow we have to do that analysis and advise developers, you can't have a street like this. We're not going to maintain that street. We're not going to do that one. So moving on, I had a question back, and I guess this fits right in with this page. I think it is right here. It's basically about the enterprise fund. So let me find that page. I think it is page... and maybe you know where that page is. It was called the building fund on this document. Here it is. It's page twenty-eight. Okay. So on this page, I want to make sure, are we talking about the enterprise fund here?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I want to build on something that my colleague, Ms. Breckus, has mentioned many times, which is, do we need to maintain this as a separate fund? And the reason I ask the question is, we have a current balance in there of about ten million dollars. We are restricted in how we can use it. Do we... this is like a self-imposed restriction. I don't think it's required by the state or anyone else. So the question is, can we blend this fund so that these funds could potentially be used for police, for some of the unmet needs? Is this something that we could look at in this coming year to free up these funds so that we could have some more flexibility in the budget?
Councilmember Doer, it's certainly one lawful bookend of the conversation. I'm not certain from a policy perspective, the manner in which it's being managed right now, we would want to step away from that, but we can have the conversation. It's certainly probably legal, I would say. But there are... there is a tremendous amount of rationale that goes into maintaining it as a separate fund.
Okay.
I think we can talk offline about some of the reasons that we got into a place where we were unhappy with how it was being managed.
Okay.
But I believe we've repaired most of those maladies.
Well, it got up to twenty-five million dollars almost in two thousand and twenty-two, if I'm reading this right, ending cash was about twenty-five million.
Yes.
And so what I want to do is, I would just like to have the conversation and put it to bed, at least for a period of time. Like, we either are going to be interested in doing it or not doing it, here's some great reasons to keep it whole. I'm totally fine with that. I just want to make sure that we don't have sort of a continuing underlying theme about it and never get it resolved. You see what I mean?
Yes, we can build that conversation into the...
Okay. And then if we decide that the benefits outweigh the costs, you know, that there's reason it might free up some cash, or we may say it is perfectly appropriate to keep it as intact fund and we know where it is and to fund things. I know that you have looked at expand, making sure that we stay in within our self-imposed laws, that we have added staff that are reflective of those appropriate expenditures. And I appreciate what you've done there. I mean, that is very good. We have moved forward to add several staff that specifically relate to this increase in development. I think that was a good move. Next question is, do we need to do it this way?
I understand.
Okay? All right.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I did want to have one little comment on that one. We have looked at that in the past as far as combining this. There are some challenges to that, and we have talked to the city attorney's office, Mr. Shipman, about it. And it does affect some of the fees that you charge, so you're going to be limited more on some of that. So there are some challenges to it. It's not a simple thing that it... that we would get the same amount of revenues because it would not be the same... same way it's done currently. And so there are some challenges to it.
One final thought on this. You could leave this intact, not affect this, leave this as its separate fund, but going forward, change your process so that we're not taking away from what's already been done. Just another kind of concept here. Okay?
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I have two questions. The first one is on slide thirty. What is the open space management contract?
That is to mitigate the area around the southeast connector. And so there's... I think Travis could probably... do you want to come up and talk about what that contract would entail?
Travis Truill, Director of Maintenance and Operations. When the city of Reno took over the southeast connector, Veterans Parkway, the land that's adjacent to that parkway from roughly Steamboat Parkway to Pembroke, it is also now a city. And there's wetlands in there, there's streams, there's... it's very vast open area that also is then bordered by horse fencing. It's an area that's just too large for our internal staff to be able to handle. As I was mentioning in the previous discussion, we don't have the staff to do anything more than really what we're doing currently. And to take over the responsibility, we need to deal with the weeds that are in the area and just maintain everything from garbage pickup out there to the fencing is just not in our bandwidth. So this is a contract to hire a contractor to go out there and deal with the very specialized handling of the weed system that's out there. There's certain... we can't go out there and just mechanically wipe out all the weeds like we normally would in areas. This has to be very specialized to the point that only appropriated resides are used when they can be used. We're even talking down to a level of handpicking weeds.
So I guess my... another bigger question for this, Travis, is of all the things that you needed when we saw your laundry list, the things that are listed here are your top priorities. These are the things that you want us to fund?
That is correct. I mean, we... as the manager's office directed just about every department in the city, we did start early in the process of identifying all the needs.
And these are your greatest needs.
These are our greatest needs, exactly right.
Now, I have one last question. Thank you very much. I just want... I don't want to go over my three minutes. The parks master plan, I'm not necessarily against a master plan update. My concern is if we have a plan and then it sits there for four years, is there a nexus between the plan and the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that we might get for those implementations? So what I'm saying is I don't necessarily want to invest in a plan that we're not going to be able to do any implementation with, which was so exciting about the placemaking because we had a plan and now we can do some of the implementation.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Taylor. Are you referring to the arts master plan in here or the parks master plan?
I'm sorry. The arts master plan. Sorry about that.
Well, I mean, in this case, I really feel like it, as staff brought forward, it really needs... it's something that needs to be done because it hasn't been done since two thousand and two. That was the last time we really looked at all the art and think about all the changes since then.
But will it give us recommendations that we're not going to be able to do anything with?
Well, we do have room tax...
Or do we have the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand from the room tax?
We have room tax in that maintenance fund that we could use to move forward. And then obviously, we would have recommendations from that program so that we could figure out how to move that forward. Arts commission has funding in there. We have different sources for art. We also have that two percent that we're required to put toward... by council resolution to put toward art. So I think it's a really important project to move forward since it hasn't been done in a long time.
And I know it's not super significant as far as cost is, so thank you very much.
Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, sure. Or is... are we on second round? So maybe back to Ms. Breckus, I lost track.
Go ahead, and then we'll get back to her.
Okay. My next question's on page thirty-seven of the slides. So first, I just want to start out by complimenting the manager and the team and yourself for focusing on maintenance. It is fantastic. I have been kind of preaching maintenance all the time I've been on council because we invest in structures and then we let them degrade, and then we have huge repair costs. And you can see it in our elevators, you can see it in roofing of buildings, it's on and on. So I love how you've sort of capitalized on the fact that, well, we can add a lot of staff, but we do have this bucket and we could start this program. So kudos to you. I had a few questions about this on this slide. So first of all, I have the five million dollars. And that... have we been doing five million or have we been doing more like two and a half million?
Up until a couple of years ago, two million was probably the most. And it was one of the areas that was cut at times when we needed to, when we needed to balance the budget.
You dive in there, okay. And then I understand when we did the apparatus replacement, which I thought was really good, the question I have is police facility impact fees. Can you remind me where those come from?
Police facility impact fees come from new development. And so this was... council approved this three years ago. And council actually has an item coming back to you, I believe it's on May tenth, regarding this. It's to be revisited every three years. As far as the impact fee, it does sunset after ten years. And it's based on a set amount per house as they're being built.
Yeah, do you know what it is?
As far as how much we collect each year, I know it's around half a million.
No. What it is per dwelling? Like, we have residential construction tax. We all know that's a thousand dollars a door, seven fifty for apartments. We don't know what the police...
I do not. Do we have staff here that potentially knows?
Okay. Well, when you do know, let me know. And then on the parks districts, I just wanted to understand what this two twenty-five-hundred was, two hundred and twenty thousand five hundred.
These are... most of this is, we don't really have anything in the park district right now that's as proposed as a new project. This is all for maintenance of things that we already have going on there. And so these are new parks in new development areas, and that money is collected to create those parks and the sidewalks.
The residential construction tax?
Yes.
Well, so I'm confused. I guess I thought... so this is to build... this is based on new residential construction tax?
Correct.
It seems small, frankly.
This is just maintenance, really, for those areas that they're keeping up in those areas. We don't have any projects that are really anticipated next year. They have some that are continuing on that they've already started, but we don't have any new big ones as proposed in this budget for next year.
Okay. Well, let me just put in a pitch. To my knowledge, RCT, residential construction tax, cannot be used for maintenance, can only be used for new things. So I think this funding must not be RCT, it must be general fund.
Well, it's... it is used in those areas because they do have to make... they do have to keep up some areas as before they install things as such.
I understand, but I know it can't be used for maintenance. We've gone round and round and round with parks.
You are correct, yes.
So this has to be new... I would just like to have more information on it, and I want to put in a pitch for Damone Ranch Park, which is built quite a while back. We're not having new residential construction tax come in for new things, but it has deteriorated significantly. The sod is essentially dead, the trees are dead, there was a maze built, it's all weeds. I've had numerous complaints this last year from anywhere from a ten-year-old, you know, to an eighty-year-old about the condition of the park. We've sent seventy pictures over to the Parks Department. to the Parks Department. I just want to get this on the radar and make sure that it's the largest park in South Reno. I want to make sure that we, I'm not asking for more equipment, but it's about maintenance. Okay? And I thought that's what this was, and that's why I thought I should bring it up now. Okay? So I don't know where it's planned to be spent. I don't even see our Parks Director, but that would be my request.
Call him.
Call him. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I'll echo that. It's been a long time since we've had a discussion at this table where stuff needs to happen about the parks district. We had a, an issue come to us on the development side up in the North Valleys and counting up all the units is like, where's the new park going? Because I know we're kicking off new ones. And there was no, no, nothing new is being built. I know we put money into Dorothy McLendon. I know we put money into Mayor's Park, North Valleys, but, you know, we need to keep an eye on where we're going with that parks district. And it's been a long, long time since we've had that discussion. And I think in past years, we had that a part of budget. Now, I want to go back to the street discussion. And I prefaced in saying, I don't like to kind of override because I know the needs are so good. But in past years, the budget building has had a lot more private conversations, and maybe I was excluded from some of those because I haven't had access to the staff. But, you know, if we had sat down with the street funding budget item, you know, you might have heard from different council members about what, you know, they see on that to help you build the budgets, you know. So I feel like some discussions maybe didn't happen. So now the manager is saying, and I think it's the appropriate response in this situation, I can't, you know, tell you what the implications would be of, you know, staying on this flat number that we find the most responsible number and alternating a mechanic or technician for one other. But I think if we had had a little more advanced discussions or even a strategic workshop in the last four years to drill down to work program, I think maybe different answers would have been built, building the budget. I'd like to go to page 29, though. 27. Now, you mentioned that we're going to add two new positions, a Training and Development Manager and a Management Assistant for a building inspection program for buildings that have already been inspect, built. And that's never been a discussion at this table. It's a completely new concept, I've heard. Now, I know what our motel inspection program is that we set up. I've waited for a performance evaluation on that. I've asked, because when we adopted that, we said we were going to have measurements and discussions. We've never even seen the validity or the program evaluation of that. This sounds a little bit akin to that, maybe. But it also sounds to me like a lot of questions about the regulatory ability to do that. Can we just, you know, I know fire goes into, you know, Joe's Vacuum Store every year and, and looks there, but I don't know if code or building can go in and see if someone has, you know, the right, you know, support system for this, you know, was built up to seismic codes. So I, I am very, very uncomfortable with two new positions, two code, about a program that we've never ever seen fleshed out. And did I miss something? I mean, was there some, Mr. Manager, was there some program discussion outline for this that I'm missing that you could reference my meet back to?
I think that I can. We pay for three positions in code right now out of the Building Enterprise Fund. This is two additional positions to help with commercial enforcement out of the Building Enterprise Fund, and it goes directly to what you're describing, whether things are built to code, whether properties are maintained in a way on the commercial side that fits the standards of, of the community. This is not the motel interdiction team. This is just commercial enforcement, and with the commercial activity that's grown in the community over the last, goodness, I don't know, decade, it's a need that's been identified both by the Director of Development Services, the Director of Code Enforcement, and is called out in the, in the audit as a, as an opportunity for us to improve the services we deliver in the community.
Well, I've read all the audits, and I haven't seen that. I haven't seen this program. And, you know, the answer that, I, you know, I think it needs more discussion before, in a tight budget, we just say we're throwing two positions on. The answer could be, and I think we need to have a discussion about it, look, code enforcement has always been complaint-based. This is to take it proactive to commercial occupancies, and here are the sort of issues. We're going to do a program outline. Don't just come in with two new positions for a program no one has ever heard of and knows about. I'm, I'm very, very struggled about, with that, but I'm going to move on.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. I just want to make sure everyone gets their time. So hold on, Councilwoman Breckus. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then I'll go to Councilwoman Eber.
Thank you. I want to say a couple of things. One is sort of a general comment and truly addressed to my colleagues, which is there's always this balance between our role as council in setting policy and the micromanagement of any of the particularized departments. And so I very much bristle at the idea that we should be looking at the minutia of how many persons are hired in code enforcement. I'm not sure that is the purview of this body. We administratively set the budget, which allows for those things to happen, but I'm not going to question whether, you know, a particular department has decided that they need a particular help. I think that's what we hire the manager for, and then he directs the activities of the body. So there's some balancing on that because, of course, we don't like to be surprised by entirely new regimes or stood-up programs. But I'm not sure that this one represents that. As I understand it, and what I see here is an extension of our conversations that surround our audit in the code area. It also speaks to the fact that we don't have enough code enforcement officers to do the volume of work that they're experiencing, and we've placed some priority on it. I suppose for my part, the questions on this particular slide is that I hope, and this is more directed towards our folks who are running this department, is that it would include also tree maintenance, right? I don't want to find out that a, a commercial facility, which we required to have a certain number of trees, came in after the fact and cut all the trees down, and then we've lost, you know, 120 trees in one fell swoop. So I just want to make sure that this would be covered in that kind of a, an analysis. So if we've required you to put in trees, I think we've required you to maintain those trees. And I think that Councilmember Doer has been, you know, largely advocating this for years, and, and I think this is one area where that can be improved. So again, I, I think I struggle with the notion that there is also some lack of information being provided. I think one of the things that I observe about this council is that, you know, if you are available and interested in the topics, the staff is available and interested to provide that information. I suppose some members who have abused staff get less information because they have a history of abusive tactics or hostility towards staff, and really, it creates this hostile work environment that results in HR complaints. And so maybe the information is not being provided in the same way to the same people because of that. And so I, I, again, I think it is important that we reflect on the organization's structure and understand what our role is in it. Oftentimes, I think that, you know, I feel like I get a lot of information in part because I ask a lot of questions in my briefings. Sometimes I'm in the building and I see a member of staff and I want to ask a question. I try to run those through the city manager's office because, again, he is the employee that we employ. But I also know that when people are kind and gracious, they are more likely to get information on a particular topic, especially given that some people have really a history of, of abusive tactics towards employees in the organization. So it's just a manner of balancing that issue as we move forward. The budget, I think, is a, a good time to reflect on our priorities, but I think it's also a very bad time to continue to abuse staff through sort of misdirected anger and hostility. So, you know, again, I think that there's lots of information that's provided that can be evaluated. I mean, these binders have been a good example of that. And over a period of time, it's not like we evaluate it in a vacuum. And so I think for my part, you know, getting lost in the minutia of these two full-time employees is sort of misdirected. And so I, I just think, it sounds great. I hope that the city manager's office will execute on it. And I, I think also focusing on, you know, information and facts rather than disinformation is also the way that I make evaluations about the budget process. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I, no.
You used call.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I want, I have a couple of questions, but I also wanted to chime in on, on the code enforcement officers because I did ask earlier about that specifically, whether, you know, we're adding code enforcement officers. And I do just kind of want to reiterate that, you know, I know that we need to be fiscally responsible, given our C-Tax, you know, estimates keep coming in lower. But we do really have a need for code enforcement officers, given, you know, the internal audit we received earlier this year showing some deficiencies we have. So I do see a value in adding those, those people just so that we can make sure that we're enforcing code equally, you know, across, you know, whatever division that we're reviewing for code. And also, I think that those positions will also bring in revenue, you know, when they find those areas that do incur fines or things like that. So I just wanted to call that out really quick. That I personally am in support of those two positions. The other questions I have, and, and this might not really be the place, but I just wanted to call it out. On slide 34, there is... I'm sorry, I might be on the wrong one. Oh, I was. So we have the events center at $100,000, and you said that was for the bowling center?
This is the ballroom, I believe. I don't have the funds up here, but I believe that's the ballroom.
Okay. Is there anything on here for the bowling center? Is that separate?
That's the $2 surcharge can go toward the bowling stadium and then can also go to the event center.
Okay. So I know the bowling center isn't used year-round. Is that something that we can do to help increase these funds that we can use, you know, for maintenance, for other needs in the city?
We actually have a interlocal agreement, and that is managed by the RSCVA. And probably Manager Thornley can probably expand on that a little bit, but we do not manage the facilities. They're managed through the RSCVA.
Yeah. So the, the root of the $2 surcharge is that it's a statutory charge appended to room nights within a given district. And it can be spent on maintaining public facilities or adding things that drive tourism within a mile of the facility where, is it a mile of the facility where it's corrected?
I think so, yes.
And so there's sort of a circle around the downtown core. There are only a handful of properties that pay this, this surcharge. The trouble with the surcharge, right, the practical challenge with it is that it's $2. So where the average daily value of room nights goes up and room tax proper indexes accordingly, $2 is a flat number. And so where we see opportunity for room tax arriving in other spaces, the $2 surcharge has stayed relatively flat. And that presents some practical challenges with respect to, with respect to, you know, sort of the purchasing power of that account. The other challenge in that space is that there is an agreement in place that requires, I forget off the top of my head, I think it's 70%, but 70%, give or take 10% of the $2 account has to go into the bowling stadium for the capital maintenance or the capital expenditures that are called out in the contract between the city, the RSCVA, and the National Bowling Congress. And so that leaves relatively little in the $2 account to do other things around the space. Now, we've done some stuff recently outside the bowling stadium, which hasn't historically been the case. Again, off the top of my head, I, I can't list those projects for you, but I'm certain we can provide that information. You can see where that money's going and how it's being invested in the, in the downtown space.
Okay. So are you saying that we can't utilize that space to generate more funds for the city?
It's, they're not, they're not, it's not necessarily one for one, right? So we, we could use, I'm certain in partnership with the RSCVA, we could find some alternate uses for the bowling stadium or some alternate opportunities to use the bowling stadium.
Yeah, that's...
The difficulty with it, though, and I'm, I'm certain Ms. Kosky could describe it better than I'm about to, is that it is a purpose-built facility for bowling. And so we're exploring some opportunities with the university for e-gaming, some other perhaps ways that we can activate the space in the absence of the National Bowling Congress being in town. But the facility itself has some practical challenges that make it useful as something other than a very large bowling alley.
Well, I, I was just asking if we could use it for bowling purposes outside of the usual, you know, few months a year. And also, we just did a mural on it incorporating, you know, other uses. So I was just curious if, if we can activate it for other things outside of the normal, you know, few months a year, if that would also help with our room tax? Because if we have other people coming to use it, whether it be for bowling or for other esports or other activities, if that would be a way to generate funds for, you know, additional funds for the city?
In the constellation of things that are possible, it is certainly possible. That said, until very recently, we did not have anyone in our complement who could run events like that. We do now. But in terms of how we would price something like that and how we would make it feasible and control the wear and tear on the facility that does not occur when it's not being used, I, I can't give you a coherent answer today.
Okay.
And, and just so you know, that, that's a position that I fought for, for eight years over at the RSCVA. I've been outnumbered over there. I'm usually the only, no vote over there. So, well, no, I shouldn't say that. But it's something that I have fought for, for a long time to activate it. And that's where I think, you know, we're really pushing for multipurpose. So it's not just bowling-centric. And so now, you know, because we have that person helping us, we are looking at other ways we can activate it. But I think there's always a conversation to be had. But it also takes money whenever you want to use it in those other capacities. And then it becomes challenging because there are a lot of blackout dates. But, you know, one of the things, there was the haunted house in there while the bowling was going on. So again, we're really trying to show it can be a multipurpose building and opportunity. But it's, a lot of that is controlled by the RSCVA. And I don't think they have been nearly as aggressive as they should be. I think there's been a lot of missed opportunity. I've been very, very vocal about that over there. And then I also think there is a lot of challenge with downtown. I would just say this, the majority of the board is not supportive of downtown initiatives, which is very, very unfortunate because we all live here. We're not a big enough city where that is not in all of our backyards. I could go on and on about that, and I'm happy to have a whole conversation about the RSCVA and bowling and, and all the ways in which we are trying to activate spaces. We've had numerous hockey, professional hockey teams reach out to us. We've had a lot of ideas come to the RSCVA, and quite frankly, I don't think they ever see the light of day. And I tend to be the only one over there pushing because it's our, it's our facility, and it's the way we activate downtown. So things need to change over there dramatically, but that's a whole other conversation one day. So anyway, just so you know, that's all on that side. But we're always open to whatever you can, whatever you can come up with.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, in addition to activating that space, you know, the, the downstream effects, you know, the room tax, you know, all these other pieces that would come with that. So just wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
There is one more issue, just to flag for this conversation ongoing. The way the debt on the bowling stadium is structured precludes us from making money with it. So that would be one component piece of the machine of turning that around in terms of the activation you're describing. We'd have to restructure that.
So you're saying we are not allowed to get the income from that?
We are not allowed to make money on that.
Yeah.
Have a question. Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah. Thank you. Just a word on the bowling, just for now, almost a year's over. When Councilwoman Jordan was here, I mean, we talked about this endlessly, about expanding it, even if not for revenue side, just expand use of the facility for our community. So definitely not a new conversation, but glad to have a new voice on the conversation. I just wanted to go back to code enforcement for a minute, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. So this has been posed as commercial buildings. And what I want to make sure, and where I think we may and may not be missing the boat, has to do with ensuring compliance with our permits. So we issue permits. They have a lot of conditions. A lot of times, things change in the field. They, they don't actually roll out the way that the conditions are placed by either the planning commission or this council. They just don't. Things change. But what I'm wondering, maybe for you, do we have a permanent inspection program? Is this, is that maybe a next step that you would consider if we don't?
So we do have a permanent inspection program, and this is part of it. This is just at enhancing the capabilities of, of...
Building.
Of that team, the building side of it.
Right. So what I want to make sure, and if we do, you know, maybe we're due for a discussion on code enforcement following the audit, following these additions, so that we can all understand where, how many people there are, what are they focusing on? Because what I don't see over there, and maybe they're there, are engineering technicians that would be inspecting stormwater or heights of, let's say, we say you can place two feet of fill, but suddenly there's three feet of fill, which blocks, you know, water on the site. We say build it this way, but they built it that way. We said make sure the road is this wide, but it's that wide, or that there's so much parking, but then they don't do it, or to Councilmember...
Or that there's so much parking, but then they don't do it or to council member, um, Reese's point. We required so many trees. Did they plant them? Are they maintaining them five years out? You know, all of these kind of things require some specialized people, not just sort of building generalists. They require people to be working with the permits that are issued and following up on the conditions. So in a proactive way, not, not in a reactive way.
And we agree with that assessment. That's a, a conversation we committed to having with you all, um, over the course of the year. As we sort out the results of that audit and, and propose a, a solution to make sure that we're providing the best service possible in that space.
One other thing could be, um, you know, we shifted to hiring a consultant or where we put the requirement on the builders to inspect their streets. They hire a PE. The PE sends us reports. We decide whether we're accepting or not. Maybe they have to have an inspector if it's not something we can do internally. Where again, the burden's on them to inspect the pond and certify it was built to design. Expect the trees were installed per design. We have actually requirements in our ordinances that, that already require this. I just want to make sure we're doing it and that's why I'm not trying to add new requirements. But for example, on the trees, it says that a landscape architect or the person who designed it would sign off that it was installed as it was designed. But I don't believe we receive those certifications. That's, I, I know we don't or haven't for a long time. So I just want to make sure that we just, if, if code says you need to do it, that they're doing it and sending it to us and we received it and we know. By other certified people, maybe not demand on our staff.
We want that too.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, I, this seemed to be the time to talk about it. So thank you.
All right. Councilman Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Vicky, thank you so much for the time you spend on this and making sure Van Buren Fest is a success. I appreciate that. Um, I did want to stick on the topic of code enforcement. From what I was looking at in the organizational charts, those two code compliance, um. Funding or, uh, new positions that we're, uh, voting on today would be put in under development services and not under code. And I understand that, um, compliance and maybe, um, reviews happen in other jurisdictions. But I'm just wondering if maybe it being in a different part of the department lends itself. That position lends itself for different requirements and maybe those requirements that council member do or had, um, addressed can be put into those requirements. And I know we may be getting into the nitty-gritty of things, but I just wanted to have a conversation about that.
Of course. So the way code works right now, um, as Councilmember Breckus alluded earlier, is we get a complaint. Code goes out and investigates. If there is specialized knowledge, whether that's an engineer, whether that's someone certified in, um, all the many building codes. Um, we then have to go find that person and they have to go out into the field. And then we have a discussion about whether or not a violation exists and what the appropriate remedy would be. Um, and then we repeat that process, uh, to, to assure that the problem has been solved. It's, um, it's pretty inefficient is, is what we're finding. And so we're trying to build out the roster of those subject matter experts so that we can perform, uh, inspections that are efficient and timely and backed by the expertise required. And so that's why when we say, hey, we're looking at commercial compliance, it exists over there in development services.
Awesome. Thank you for addressing that. Um, Mr. Truhill, if you, I can ask you a question. It's going to be about potholes, just to give you, um, an update. So I'm just curious if any of these, um, positions would be able to assist with that. I know it's a huge concern for a lot of our constituents and from what I also saw on the Reno Direct reports, it looks like a lot of people are, um, obviously reporting those. So I'm just curious if any of these positions would be able to address some of those concerns.
So the, the positions that, um, excuse me, that were being charged to the, uh, street fund are specific to signal maintenance work. So they wouldn't be actively participating in pothole repairs. Um, there was one position however, for the maintenance three. Um, and while that position is mainly going to be used in, uh, sweeping operations. One of the things we do is we use all of our staff to fill potholes. And so we even have sweeper operators that have bags of asphalt on their trucks. And when they see a pothole, have the ability to pull over, fill that pothole and, and keep moving on. So this, it would, um, provide a level of efficiency that we wouldn't have now. Um, I wouldn't, this is, uh, I'd like to introduce Tim Hendricks, our, uh, streets maintenance manager. Can you speak a bit about the pothole work we've done this year? Where we're sitting now, uh, how many?
Uh, for the record, Tim Hendricks, Streets Division Manager. Um, currently we are, uh, last numbers we ran, we're at thirty-eight hundred potholes that we filled this year. Um, and we are taking in, we have, uh, four hundred ninety-nine, uh, work order service quests that we've been given and we've completed four hundred ninety-five of those. We have very large areas that we, we take all the work orders and we conglomerate them together so that we can be more, more efficient in working in a certain area at a time. Um, we found as you, as you kind of bounce around, you don't get to them. So we'll, we'll take, say, uh, everything on Plum Lane, we'll do everything on Plum Lane at once. Or we'll do everything on Collis Drive or North Virginia a, as we can go through that. Um, you'll notice that there's a lot of areas that are kind of blown up again from this winter with, with the water and that. So we just prioritize them as they come in. We put them together and then we go out and try to be efficient as far as taking care of all of them in an area at a time.
Thank you. I appreciate the information. Before my time is up, I just want to highlight your sensitivity to that region and the Southeast Connector. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Mayor Reese.
Well, just briefly, because we don't get to see Mr. Hendricks or Mrs. Truhill as often as we would like. Thank you for the work that your teams are doing. You know, I've been fortunate to spend some time over the last six months with, uh, your employees. And my gosh, they're working hard all the time. They're a, a real joy to be around. A number of them have, you know, twenty-five-year careers at the city of Reno doing work that is tough and requires long hours, commitment. Uh, so, you know, they have our whole heart, uh, here at the city of Reno. So it's good to see the both of you today.
All right, we are on, uh, I believe the last round. So where, are we on three? So one more round or no? Have we exhausted that?
This will be Councilmember Breckus's third round.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we were more in a workshop setting and I, I appreciate your indulgence on these issues. First of all, um, uh, I appreciate that there's comments about the bowling stadium, the event center and the ballroom. But, you know, the important thing go to me, for me on that is when room taxes fall, can't make debt service. We paid over twenty million dollars of general funds since I've been on council, I think the number is, for those debt services because of room tax shortfalls. That's how the bonds were issued on those. And so there's exposure there, but the two-dollar surcharge, I think, really was not seventy percent of the bowling. I think we had to meet our bowling agreement capital projects, which I think we have with exterior. And then I think it's available for all downtown, uh, tourism uses. So I think maybe, um, there's a little more latitude there, but I haven't been on that committee in a while. But, um, I'll try and refresh my memory because it's a storyline that I try and keep, uh, on top of. I want to talk about the Southeast Connector. So what I understand is a million and a half dollar contract a year and we're proposing a million out of the sewer fund and five hundred thousand out of the street fund. Is that how that's going?
It's actually, um, the total contract's three ninety-eight a year.
Three hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Three hundred and ninety-eight thousand and it's split between the streets and sewers.
Okay, here's the problems with these is one. Um, this is taking over commitments that RTC made in our interlocal when we built the road. They were doing this. This was a regional road. As a matter of fact, is the only person, well, the mayor was here too, who was here when this road was going and it had been pulled off the streets plan, but got a ball rolling during the recession. It was not a Reno project. It was a regional project. It was opposed by Reno residents strongly. And I always knew this day would come where Reno's going to take all the maintenance on it. No, not in my world. That goes back to RTC who holds those federal permits and says you budget four hundred thousand dollars for maintenance because Reno's going to take the money and put it into pothole fixing. Or it's not coming out of the sewer fund because guess what? It's in a sewer shed area where the money doesn't even derive from that area. Because that is the area that goes down to Stumworth, that goes all of the county. And so you're tapping sewer funds from North Valleys, from Central Reno, from South Reno, from West Reno to pay for maintenance in the southeast part of the valley where the sewer fund isn't even paying for that. That is absolutely not right. And it's a reason why we wanted a stormwater utility, but that's been so slow-walked, so, you know, behind schedule. But I am not supporting that. My support is you go tell RTC they've got to sign up for another five years. That's what this body needs to do, in my view. But can we go to slide thirty-three, please? Because I do want to talk a little bit about, um, a couple of things. Is one, I'm the new liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission and I hear, and I'll try and report back at my next, uh, council updates of why they think that plan is needed, but they made some very good art, um, discussion about it since I've been on. And I do want to reflect that. And Mayor, if I could have just another minute.
Okay, one more minute and then we're going to wrap it up.
Yeah, I know. We've only got three and a half more hours, so I know we do have to move, um, on our calendars. But, um, I don't see any money for what is called five oh-one Riverside Drive, only debt service. And if we don't start putting money into that, bring it up here for what we're doing on, on it, which we have not had that discussion. I think we're going to be just as bad as our town in letting that building deteriorate. I haven't heard anything about the maintenance we're doing, haven't heard anything about where we are going to, you know, program that building. I see no money in there. We're going to be just as bad as our town and let that building deteriorate. So that is a big concern for me. So I'd like to see this bucket of money where I hear, well, the art people want to put ballards around the roundabout on the regional road at Wells Avenue. That's a road project. That's a road improvement on a roundabout. That's street infrastructure. It's not artwork. That goes over to RTC also in my world and this money comes in to. Figure out the plan for five oh-one Riverside Drive because I'm very for aid. We're paying the, we're doing just as poorly jo- job as our town was on that. We haven't had a discussion on what we're doing on that building since we bought it. And I'm, I go by there and I'm seeing bad signs there. So that's, that's a problem for me in this, in this area. I'd like to see the, the ballards for a regional road come out of a def- different budget. And I'd like to see a budget to go to five oh-one Riverside Drive to figure out what we're doing with that asset. Because it's going to look really bad on this council. If we, you know, wrestled the bu- building from our town for a million dollars of paying for it and then all of a sudden, what happens? The roof falls in, uh, goes up in, you know, flames? You know, shame on us.
Thank you so much. City manager, did you want to?
Well, we've allocated a million dollars of ARP to the facility. Um, and I know that we're hard at work in terms of building out a plan to bring forward to you in terms of what's going to happen with that property.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, go ahead. Vicky, I am sorry. Let's get back on track.
Wait, I didn't.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert.
And this is probably for Travis. Um, you mentioned that the street sweepers have the capability to fill potholes as they come across them. Is that something that you track? Or do you only fill potholes that you come across that were submitted to Reno Direct? Or do you have any numbers on that? Or, you know, is it truly that they see them and they stop and fill them? You know, everyone that they see? I'm just kind of curious as to how that works.
So we, um, it, it kind of depends on the situation. Every pothole's different. It's its own special thing. And some of them are very simple and easy to repair, um, where it is just a matter of the, the operator gets out of the truck. And it's not just sweeper operators. It can also be, um, guys who are out, uh, cleaning up garbage from the sides of the roads. They just get out of the truck and they can fill the potholes. If it's something more substantial, depth-wise, size, maybe it requires more traffic control. Um, we'll absolutely schedule it and we'll come out there with a bigger crew and, and do the longer areas that Tim was talking about that. Um, you know, Plum Lane, for instance, we'll close off a travel lane and do quite a few in one day. Um, does that answer your question?
Sort of. And, and the reason I ask is just, you know. Particularly in my ward, I get, um, calls about, um, potholes that have been, you know, submitted to Reno Direct. And, uh, people say, well, you know, the pothole that I submitted was fixed, but there was like one on either side of it that didn't get fixed. And granted, that's, that's different. That's not a sweeper that came through. But I was just curious, you know, if you guys track that or if it's, um, you know, documented somewhere where you guys fix them. Um, or, um, y- you know, if you kind of review, um, Reno Direct. Um, potholes as your street sweeping as well. So just kind of curious about that. Or if you have any numbers on, you know, how many of these streets sweepers are, are, um, filling, uh, you know, as part of their usual rounds.
Yep. Um, Tim had kind of touched on it. Actually, I think he had the exact numbers of it, uh, earlier. But, um, I think, uh, we were talking just since January. So yes, to answer your question, we do track them. Uh, we use, uh, we get notifications through Reno Direct. Uh, we get phone calls directly made to us often. Uh, we go through and, and we prioritize pothole work.
But this, I mean, outside of Reno Direct.
Oh, yeah.
Submissions, like just the ones that you guys see, do you guys keep a log of those as well?
Correct.
Okay.
That's on our daily work orders or daily worksheets we do and, and the guys will come in and, and report that, yes, we did these potholes. And often what we're seeing is the guys will pick up potholes and remedy the pothole issue. Um, while we're getting the, simultaneously, we're getting the, the request in through Reno Direct or phone calls or emails. Um, Tim, you want to, can you give those numbers again to her?
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. For the record, Tim Hendricks, Streets Division Manager. So just out of Reno Direct, we're at the thirty-eight hundred. Um, but if you go by what we've done this year, actual with what we've done, we're pushing six thousand. And so they will come across them and they will, they will record them on their paperwork. Also, what you'll find too with the potholes is so you have a, now you have a, a bad area of asphalt. And so as they fill it, they think it's, you know, they're done with it. But the, the areas around it will then blow up with traffic on them because it's already unstable. So, so there might be a pothole that's been done and later on, there could be a couple more that show up after we've been there to fill it. So it's, it's one of those things where with this weather, we have just, you know, bad, bad airs. We try, we try to fill them. Um, and then later on with traffic in that, it'll create another one next to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. For the record, Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance again. I'm going to switch to slide fifty-six, which is where we stopped. We're going to switch gears a little bit here and talk about long-term liability funding. Along with, um, maintenance and reserves and doing all of those long-term things that make the budgets physically sustainable. Long-term liability funding does that as well. We have workers' compensation. We have OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employee Benefits Obligation. These are obligations for, um, medical insurance and medical payments, uh, post-retirement. So an employee retires and some of those are eligible for medical benefits after retirement. That's what OPEB is. And then we have risk insurance premiums. We fund these. These are all self-funded, so the departments pay to these funds and then we run them kind of like a business. You can see that workers' comp premiums is really the area where we've spent, uh, really been growing that. So that's the big green areas. We've been growing that payment toward that long-term liability. The OPEB, we didn't really start funding that until two thousand and sixteen. And then risk insurance, we haven't really increased that over the years and it was pretty much non-existent during the, the recession. So when you look at workers' compensation, that has a, a total liability similar to, um, the post-employee benefits liability. It's an actuarial study based on the number of employees and the number of retirees. The effect in here, we do have, uh, a larger, um, liability in here because of the long-term benefits that are provided to your public safety employees. They have a lifetime benefit for some of those items, uh, that are workers' comp related. And so right now our liability is at sixty-two million dollars. And we're funded up to, we have cash in there, about eighteen million dollars. But you can see where we started in fifteen with that line, um, down below and we've grown that. So we've grown this to pay down that liability. And this is one area where council has really given us that direction to, um, continue to fund these unfunded liabilities. When you look at the post-employee benefits, that's retiree health. When we started funding that in two thousand and sixteen, it's, uh, approximate a hundred and fifty million dollar liability. Uh, we have it funded now at twenty million dollars, which is amazing because we just started it in two thousand and sixteen, which is actually the year I came here to the city. And so there's a net of a hundred and thirty million dollar liability. For this one, we potentially would want to fund it up to around fifty to the sixty percent mark. And then the interest earnings on the account and the investments of the money would continue to fund it on an ongoing basis. So that's the goal of this. We build it up to a point that we don't have to contribute into it anymore. We build it up to a point that we don't have to contribute into it anymore. And so I really, when we started on this even a few years ago, I didn't really think that there was an end in sight in this. We continue to do this, and it's the right thing to do. But if you look at it, how we have it projected out to continue the current funding, which is four million dollars, and continue that out to twenty, thirty-three, we will have this funded in ten more years. So in ten years, this will be funded. We can use the money from this to do the pay-go, because currently we're doing a pay-go for the current employees, plus we're contributing to this. So we're really paying on it twice. Once this is funded, that will free up money in the general fund. This is the last area I wanted to talk about. Well, I have two more. I have risk. This is the risk fund. What you have in here are risk program. It's the claims management, the risk mitigation, safety assessment, and similar things. This one, we've seen a steep increase in the insurance premiums in here. So that's why you see the, the ending cash going down quite a bit. So we're going to have to contribute more to this fund going forward. Not for next year, but following budgets, we will start to have to build a better program in here based on the, the current insurance costs in here and the programs that are being administered. One of the things that nationwide, we've seen an increase in insurance premiums, and that's mostly due to national events like floods and hurricanes and such. And maybe we don't have these items, but it has increased premiums across the board nationwide. And so we have seen a steep increase in those premiums. Medical fund. Again, these are all self-funded through the city. The city pays these claims, but they do pay a TPA or a plans administrator to administer the plans. But the claims are actually paid by the city as self-administered. You'll see that we didn't have a lot of money in this fund back in two thousand and fifteen. We were below ten million. Right now, we're up around twenty million. And that's really kind of the sweet spot where we want to stay, is around the twenty million mark. If you remember during the pandemic, we gave a medical premium kind of holiday to the employees. So that took down some of that money. You'll see in two thousand and twenty that dip in the, the funding there in cash. But even doing that, we're still maintaining around the twenty million dollar mark. And we have, we're kind of at a sweet spot again, where we are at the point where we want to be dollar-wise, even though we are seeing kind of an increase in some of the claims and some of the dollars in there. It's, the premiums for medical, we have not increased to the employee across the board since two thousand and seventeen. And I think that's very remarkable. The last thing I want to talk about here is the fee schedule. We had a lot of discussion last time we were here in the March workshops regarding some of the changes to two particular fees. The administrative appeal fee, which was scheduled to go up, and then the land use appeal fee. And so initially, what was proposed in March was a hundred and twelve dollars for the administrative appeal fee. And we're going to, we're recommending that go back to the sixty-eight dollar amount, which is consistent with the CPI increase for the current year. So that would go to sixty-eight. Council's other concern during that meeting was the land use appeal charge, because based on our fee study, it was shown it needed to be around six hundred and forty-two dollars to pay for the cost to do that. Council had some concerns on that. And so we're recommending that go back to a hundred dollars. So for those two fees, those were the only two changes that we heard from council's input last time. Since the time we met, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Financial Advisory Board have all reviewed the fee schedules and agreed with this. And as far as they have agreed with the methodology and such for the other fees. The Building Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, it was agendized to be discussed in April, but they did not have a quorum. So they won't discuss it until their next meeting. So this is just my wrap-up on the items that you've seen today, the fourteen new positions being proposed. For the fourteen positions, you're looking at one point nine million dollars. Five would be from the street fund, four from the sewer fund, two from the building, and then three in the general fund. Those are the paramedics, which are cost-neutral. And then in all-fund summary, this page just shows you everything from each particular area, including full-time positions, as well as the extra enhancements, such as the additional contracts and such. And so in total, you're looking at three point eight million dollars in the fourteen full-time positions. This is my last slide, and I'm just bringing this back to you. It's one you saw earlier. And this is just the proposed additions based on council priority, giving you that information again to look at based on council priorities. And again, it's three point eight million dollars that's being proposed as the additions to the budget. And so with that, that, that concludes my section of this. Ms. Kowski would be up next to do the project highlights for Street Fund. And I'm available to answer any more questions on this section.
Okay, let's have a round of questions from council, and then let's go into break. Okay? I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Dour.
Yeah, thank you. At our last meeting, and again, I don't know which part of the budget this is, but it seemed like you were sliding into home base here. I had requested that you consider a small budget, five or ten thousand dollars, for some of the commissions that have no funding. So some do. I mean, the Arts Commission has two hundred thousand dollars to work with approximately. The Accessibility Committee has, I think, forty thousand dollars to, to put in ADA-type stuff. So were we able to find a place for that? It isn't a lot of money, and it wouldn't rise to the level of this big budget presentation. But I just wanted to know, did we put it in council funds or liaison funds, or what, what are we doing with that?
Councilmember Dour.
Yeah.
We have not yet resolved a, a plan of attack on, on that particular request. But we are actively sort of racking our brains on how we might be able to accommodate it.
Just knowing it's still on the table. This is our last day on budget, so I wanted to daylight it again. And again, I had said, it's up to you how you want to figure that out. But I do think it would relieve council funds for, for us having to pay for things like award ceremonies and rental of a room and so on and so forth. Minor expenses, but they could be a little bit more independent. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that one.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I didn't get a chance to talk about the code enforcement add-ons the other day and, or the last go-around. And I know we did an audit. It just seems like a step's been skipped. And I'll just say here, is one of the positions was a training manager. Well, we have a training manager that's newly onboarded in HR. And very few departments have their own training managers, you know? And this is a division. And so I don't recall the link of that to the audit. I want to know why it can't be covered by the HR person and that program, that I have not even heard how that's doing or any outcomes of that. And so that's a problem I see. And also, in the past, you know, the person who did a lot of that special-use permit code compliance for the commercial was a landscape architect, and I heard something about trees. So landscape architect is really, you know, is it, but it's a code officer. So I just, I really have a problem of this step, step over is budgeting before outlining a program by the council. Problematic to me. I'm going to go on. The other one is, oh, Ms. Dour mentioned, you know, money for all the boards and commissions. If we ever go into Strategic Planning Workshop again, which, you know, I was there in October twenty nineteen, so at least I had some say on it, unlike three of my colleagues, I would really want an overhaul analysis of all of our boards and commissions before we plug money to some of them, which would be a new, you know, standard for some of them. So if we ever do a workshop, Strategic Planning Workshop, and get a work program for our city manager, that would be on my list. In terms of risk, you have characterized that the risk increases in pays our insurance. But when I go through a lot of the accounts payable, I see a lot of payout on risk. And so any, anything coming out of the risk that's a payout, that's not under like an ongoing contract, that comes to this body, correct? If it's more than fifty thousand?
I believe it does, yes.
Do, Mr. Manager? Because I've seen a lot of like risk.
Repeat your, repeat your question, Councilwoman.
Do risk payouts come to us, correct? If they're above a certain amount, correct?
Can we run back to the slide, please, Ms. Van Buren? So risk payouts in the form of settlements of contested claims that are above a certain amount come to you. What this chart has is increased expenses that are driven primarily by increased insurance premiums that Ms. Van Buren described on another chart.
Yeah, and I heard that, but I'm, I'm, what's the breakdown? What's the trend of payouts versus insurance premiums? I think I brought this up before.
I'm certain we can get that for you. But in general, in general, casualty insurance has about doubled for everyone who pays for that. And on the medical side, pharmacy has become extraordinarily expensive over the last three or four years. And that's reflected here. It is. Risk is, risk pays the insurance premiums for the organization. So the risk fund is where we draw from when we pay for insurance.
For the healthcare? The employee healthcare? I thought we had our own fund for employee healthcare.
For pharmacy.
Is that true?
Is that true?
I think it comes from the medical fund.
Okay. Then this is casualty insurance for vehicles and for property.
And just so that you're aware, our insurance premiums altogether for property and liability and such in here, they were previously around a million dollars. They're running two million dollars now, two years later. And it doesn't have, some of that is due to the riots, because we did have the riots here. Some of that's due to just nationwide. The claims, as far as being filed, impact us on our new property insurances as we go forward. And so that has doubled. Typically, we budget for claims payouts anywhere from a million to a million and a half. And typically, we don't pay that out. But we generally budget a million to a million and a half for just the claim payouts that you're talking about outside of insurance-type claim payouts.
Yeah, I mean, I'm submitting to the council that we need periodic reports on what the payouts are, what the amounts, if they don't even rise to us. Because that, tracking that is a parameter of how the organization is doing. And that includes, you know, when someone is let go as an employee, you know, is the separation agreement executed? And are they paid out of risk? Or are they paid out of the department's separations? Because I'm seeing a lot of those, too. And they're causing me concern of the fiscal oversight of the, of the city. And, and I wanted to flag that. But my last question really is about fees, about fire transports. Is that in your fee schedule?
Fire transports, I confirmed with our fire department, they do bill for transports in the ambulance if it is, if the patient has insurance. They do not bill the patient.
I'm concerned that that's not, that needs to be in, clearly in our fee schedule, in my worldview. Okay? We need to know what it is. And I'm also concerned that some people are getting charged and others aren't. And I'll tell you, I've done some researches. That one community I'm familiar with, they have a, you know, different state, but a property tax increment, property override, you know, a hundred and thirty a residence. So everyone, everywhere, all the time, gets free transport, you know, through that from the fire department. Here, I just, I don't understand how we can have two service levels in a billing practice for one group, one group of people. And I'd like to see one of these bills. I'd like to know how many bills are coming out. I'd like to know what people are being charged. And I think it should be in our fee schedule. Because I don't see that, how the, the authority exists to send someone a bill if it's not in our fee resolution.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, where are we at?
Councilwoman Breckus and Dour have had one round each.
Okay.
Before we move on, I actually think we should invite Mr. Pingree to the lectern to describe why a training manager is necessary in this space. We have innumerable uniform codes that need to be enforced. It's specialized training. It's a specialized knowledge base. And it's, it's an efficiency for the organization.
Good afternoon. Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. So over the last few months, we've really started diving down into some of the research and some of the, some of the issues that we have within a department of our size that encompasses so many different facets of the development community, whether it's what's been brought up today as far as landscaping and trees not being completed or finished the, the way they were supposed to be. We have, we have determined that within our own department, we have a specialty need for the enforcement piece of that. Whether that's just work without permit to help with the redundancy of code enforcement and, and the building department working together at the same time, or whether it's a, you know, a landscape bond that's being called back two years later that we don't field verify whether that work was performed or not. So we have everything from our engineering services to go back out to make sure that the engineer of record was correct when they signed this off, or whether it was a planning case that they were required eighty-five trees to live, you know, forever, whether or not those trees are still there two years down the road when we, when we issued that, when that landscape bond is given back. So over the last few months, we've really started looking into that. And in order to provide the right process for this, we need somebody who is going to manage that process. Because this is going to involve all three divisions within building. It's also going to involve code enforcement, Parks and Recreation. It's going to take a, a, a sole person, one sole person in order to put, to get this off the ground. And we do feel that that is the best method in order to put this together, to make a collaborative effort within Development Services to enforce the multiple, multiple codes and, and ordinances that we do have to enforce in our department as well.
Okay. All right. Madam Mayor, may I ask any further questions? Hold on, before I get to. No, you're good? Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, three minutes.
Page sixty-five. I've heard tremendous concern through the organization about the increase of positions that are outside of the Civil Service Commission. We all know that we have certain limits of how many can be outside of the Civil Service Commission, appointed, you know, and appointed officials. The mayor, manager, can, as he has, just call someone up he knows and say, hey, I have a position I want to hire you for. No open recruitment, no merit recruitment. But the rest of our organization runs on merit. And I did get a memo recently that we're doing a compensation and classification study, and there's a desire to change some of that. But that's going to be a big topic of discussion. But I'd like to know of these positions, the street fund, are those going to be civil service, all of them?
Yes, I believe so.
The sewer fund, are those going to be all civil service?
Yes, I believe so.
The two-building fund?
Yes. Yes.
Civil service, open recruitment. Okay. And then the other three in the general fund?
These would be paramedics.
Okay. So everything that's coming through this budget will go through the Civil Service Commission, will be merit based, are not, as we call, exempt, and can be hired through other mechanisms that the manager chooses that are non-competitive. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, we'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting at 1:59 with all members present. Looks like Carrie Kosky is going to take it away.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, for the record, Carrie Kosky, Director of Public Works, your city engineer. So, as Vicki said, going to talk about projects in the street fund. So, before I do that, oops, do you want me to advance the slides, Madam Clerk? Okay. Okay, before I do that, in the second row, back behind me, is the Public Works Leadership Team that I'd like to introduce and say that this team, without them, I couldn't do, we couldn't do everything we do, and I'm very gracious to have them on my team. I have my Assistant Director, who's Khalil Wilson, sitting in the middle there. Next to him is Katie Harrison, which you heard from last week. She's our Engineering Manager. And then next to Katie is Trish Sebastian, our Administrative Services Manager. She's basically the wizard behind the sewer fund curtain and the street fund curtain. She knows all of the magic behind what happens there. And then on the other side of Khalil is Kurt Dietrich, our Traffic Engineer. And then next to Kurt is Amy Pennington. She's our Special Coordinator, Special Projects Coordinator, and just great just to have all of these people on my team. They just do fabulous things. So, I'll get kicked off here with what, so the format here is I've got about seven slides for you. Talking about what we're, what we've done in the street fund and what we're going to do with the street fund. And same thing with our sewer collection projects. And you might, you might be asking yourself, why am I talking about sewer collection projects? And basically, they're capital improvement projects. Anything that's under a street, the Public Works Team does. Things, after my presentation, Director McGoon will talk about the utility services and all things sewer that, all of the studies, everything that's kind of plant-related and not really under a street. If you want to look at it that way. So, get started. Neighborhood streets for '24, CIP, we're asking for about $25 million. And the way we're going to break that down is through Neighborhood Streets, Traffic Safety, Maintenance Operations, and Bridge Program. And I'll talk a bit about each one of those. So, first off, I want to tell you what we're doing this year. Just kind of to recap, in 2023, I want to talk about the Neighborhood Street Program. And what the goal of the Neighborhood Street Program is to keep the average of all streets condition in the, in the good condition range. So, what that means is, you think about it as, in terms of grades. So, a grade A would be an excellent, and an F would be a failure. It's the same thing with streets. And we look at, we put a number to that because we're engineers, that's what we do. And we're not unique, other, other agencies do the same thing. They rate their streets with a pavement condition index. Right now, our Neighborhood Streets are right about 78. So, that's a B, right? And that's really a good place to be with your Neighborhood Streets. The local, our Neighborhood Streets, we have about 500 centerline miles of those streets. We bring back, we bring to council the confirmation of the reconstruction streets about every two years. And the reason we do that is, is staff will try to get ahead of the utility projects that might need to occur, development projects that might be in the works. So, in 2022, council confirmed the Neighborhood Streets for 2023. And we just kicked off in Ward Four, up there in the Talis area. We started that, that one this week. The Van Ness area, which is up there off of Keystone, it's in the center of the map on the left. That one, along with Ackard, we're about to put those out to bid. The reason why we delayed bidding is, those two, we didn't put them all out this year, is because the City of Reno used to lead the bidding efforts. We used to put, get all of our projects ready to go out to bid early in the, in the year, like January. And everybody figured out our technique. When we did that, we got better prices, we got our projects done quickly. Now, the RTC, City of Sparks, Washoe County, they're all doing the same thing. They're putting their projects out early, so there's a lot of competition. Been working with the AGC, and they suggested, hey, maybe you don't want to just overload us because we're not going to be able to give you good prices. So, we took a step back, and we're trying to stagger them, that's why we're doing that. Now, if it turns out that we get to one of those projects, like in the Van Ness area, and we don't think that we can get that done this year, we're not going to start. We learned a valuable lesson with Watt last year, so thank you for all of the feedback, and we won't do that again. Why do we, when we select streets, we don't select streets by ward. And the reason we don't is because we rotate around in the city. We've got a backlog of nearly $300 million. If we focused on one ward, we would be in that ward for 10 years, or, you know, eight years. We rotate around the city so we can provide fairness to all of the residents. But we do group the streets, and that's why you see that on, that on the slide. Want to talk a little bit about surface treatments? We are seeing that our surface treatment prices are staying right around 20, 25 cents a square foot. And remember, a surface treatment is like an oil change in your car, it's preventative maintenance. And we want to continue to keep our good streets good. So, all of the streets that we have accepted, the developers do have to put a surface treatment on those. But then in another six to seven years, we program them for more preventative maintenance. We are seeing that we can extend the life of pavements up to 10, 15 additional years. Typically, pavements are designed for a 20-year life. Want to talk a little bit about the square foot prices that have, that we're seeing. Katie and I were just kind of laughing about that this morning. Our square foot prices, three years ago, we were using $12 a square foot. We are now an average price of $19 to $23 a square foot. Now, it kind of depends on how much other things you have to do besides the pavement. One of the things what we're focusing on, as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Breckis brought up, is sidewalk connectivity, ADA connectivity, traffic safety devices, all of those things, it all adds up. So, we've been spending about $3 million each year on our surface treatments, and about $20 million on our reconstructs. That gets us about five centerline miles a year. Okay. More highlights, so more, more things that we do with the street program, with, with the street fund, other than keep our good condition, our streets in good condition, is we focus on other great things. This year, we installed six-speed radar signs and five rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian safety. We completed the Virginia Street Placemaking Study with an implementation plan approved by the council. We completed the Micro Mobility Pilot Study. I'm very, very pleased to report that we also developed a data-driven approach to prioritizing schools' own beaker, beacons. And been working with several of the council members to get additional beacons out into our community. We've got about a three, I think it's around $3 million need for school beacons. We're not just using street fund. RTC is pledged to use some of their dollars in the Traffic Spot Program. Kurt was successful in getting the RTC to do that. We've also responded to over 800 citizen service requests. Kurt's team implemented a pedestrian safety zone on Sierra Street in downtown Reno. We implemented the first-ever pilot project for nighttime speed limits on Veterans Parkway. And you're probably going to, as long as I'm here, we're going to do pilots because I think that's the best, I think we, we get a lot of good information out of pilot studies. We completed and designed the contract for the retroreflective, that's the, the signals there with the retroreflective around it. Kurt's group went ahead and got that out to bid, and I think they've started, or nearly starting that work. So, what do we have planned for 2024? So, as I mentioned, the 2024 Neighborhood Streets were confirmed by this coun, were confirmed by this council. We're going to concentrate in three different areas. I'll start on the slide from the left to the right. East University Way is what we're calling it, we have about seven streets. They're located in Wards Three and Four, kind of crosses the boundaries there. Yori to the north side of Yori, which is Mill Street to Vassar. That particular unit will be in Ward Three. And then Yori Avenue South, which is Plum Lane to Gentry, those streets there are in Ward One. One of the things that we did this year with our, our CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant prioritization, is we looked at how we could take other funding sources and utilize those funding sources in other areas to get as much bang for our dollar with the Community Development Block Grant money. So, we are, we've prioritized some school flashers in the three school, the, the areas in the Yori North and South. We have three schools, we have Booth Elementary, Vaughn Middle School, and Loder Elementary School. Those are all under design. So, street, so the traffic, priorities for traffic engineering and safety will continue to focus on infrastructure for traffic calming, speed humps, speed radar, and flashing beacons. We also, in the, in the North Valleys, we will be, we will start the design for Phase One of that Maintenance and Operations Facility. So, we've been working very closely with Director Truhill and his team on the early stages of the design and what, and what that facility is going to look like. We know that we probably don't have enough money, but this will get us started. So, we purchased those, in the picture on the lower right-hand side, we purchased those two parcels in the North Valleys just off, off of North Virginia, being Ward Four, and it's just southeast of Lemon Drive. That really aligns with all of the, with three of the major council priorities, the fiscal sustainability, because it aligns resources to focus on priority services, infrastructure and climate change by minimizing environmental impacts, and then organizational effectiveness by creating, by promoting greater efficiencies. So, sewer projects, this is the, how about this? I'm going to skip that slide, and we'll go back to that, all right? Sewer fund, so I said, Public Works Capital Projects, we do everything that's essentially under the pavement. So, for fiscal year '23, our sewer collections and capacity projects that we completed last year was the, excuse me, the Lear Force Main, which is in Ward Four, we upsized, upsizing an additional capacity for the North Valleys. Chevy Chase Sewer Project, which is in Ward One, removed a sewer main that Maintenance and Operations was having very, a lot of difficulties maintaining, couldn't, they couldn't get access, so we moved that into the street. Pembroke Drive, near Veterans, actually went under Veterans, in Ward Three. We replaced an aged-out sewer main and, by boring underneath the new roadway, not having to cut the new roadway, placing a casing and inserting new piping. And then, the cured-in-place lining project is, basically covers all wards. Certain segments of pipe, totaling up to about nine miles of lining. And then, the Humboldt North and South Sewer Rehabilitation Project, I am pleased to say that we are, we replaced aged-out sewer mains that were in several alleys and that very much needed it in the old Southwest. So, what are we going to be focused on, focusing on in fiscal year '24? We're going to be focusing on basically two main categories, the collection system condition and collection system capacity. The, the primary focus is going to be for the collection system in 2024, the Talis Street Rehab Area, up there in Ward Four. We got, I think we're doing about $3 million worth of work. And then we've got another 10 miles of pipe that we're going to line. The annual Sewer On Call will be advertising and bidding next month. As far as the capacity system projects, we work very closely with Director McGoon's group here. They identify the priority, the needs for those, and then assign them, and we go out and put them out to, hire a consultant to do the design, put them out to bid. So, the first project is the Mill Street Interceptor Design. That's located in Ward Five. It is an interceptor that's parallel to the river, basically from White Fir to McCarran. It's approximately 12,000 linear feet of sewer main, and will increase the size to support flows from the Verde area. The McCarran Plumus Capacity Project, that one is in Ward Two. It's in the southwest plumus between McCarran and Manzanita. There's an increased capacity for that sewer line from 10 inches to 15. We're going to relocate it in the right-of-way for better maintenance and operation access. Moya Interceptor Capacity Project, that one there is in Ward Four. It's approximately 16, 1,700 feet of sewer pipe, upsizing it from 12 inches to 18 inches from Silver Dawn Drive to Beacon Cove Drive. And then, Island Eight, super excited about this project, and we did receive a, a grant for a portion of this project, it's located in Ward Three. And it is near Audi and Montello, it's bounded by Whittikin on the north, Audi to the south, and Helena to the west. Currently, this project will set us up for adding piping into the neighborhood so we can get those folks off of Septic and onto City Sewer Services. The last project on there is the Keystone Booth Siphon, which is in Ward One. I think we've had a couple of presentations, or maybe one presentation at the NAB on this one. The Booth Street Siphon runs underneath the Truckee River, near Booth and Riverside. And it's had, it's reached its useful life, and we're replacing it with a new main. We won't be disturbing, essentially, it's going to be in, in very close to the same proximity that it is right now. So, those are the highlights of what, what the Public Works Team is concentrating on. And I will stop there and open it up for questions.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Council, hold on before I go to Councilwoman Dorr, go ahead, Vice Mayor Reeve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need some help, though, from our clerk, I want to pull up something that is in overlap with the presentation. First of all, Ms. Kosky, always an absolute joy to hear from you, and especially, I appreciate your recognition of your team. I know that everyone in the organization has people that are working with them and alongside them. It's always nice to hear who they are and put names to faces. Although I think we know most of the folks, it's always good to acknowledge. You're very gracious in that regard. I also think you are someone who I wish we could clone because we need more of you and, and your brain power, and we can't make more of you, so we'll just do with what we got. So, thank you for that. I wanted to look at this because I, I understood and appreciated much of your conversation about the road maintenance projects. And there's an odd way in which it overlaps with something I'm interested in. This is our northvalleysimprovements.com project landing page. Something that I've been spending a lot of time with, obviously because of my time on RTC. And I want our community to understand the considerable amount of effort that we're making to make improvements in the North Valleys. And so, this is a good place for me to do that. You've identified a couple of both past projects and also, I think, one future project that you mentioned. And I want to know, are those included here? I mean, where can I point people to the public to? Because I've had, for example, I've had a business owner in the last week reach out and say, hey, you know, they're about to, ready to kick off something in front of my business, and I need to know about it. And then, we of course know that NDOT is proposing expansions on. And then we, of course, know that NDOT is proposing expansions on 395, which overlaps with some of the public lands discussion, so there's just a lot going on here. So how do we read some of your project together with this particular landing page? And maybe that's a good starting point for my conversation with you.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And appreciate you putting this map up, because we are pointing all of the public to this map. Right now, the legend on the, I guess, the lower, yes, the lower left-hand side, basically that talks about all of the RTC projects that are going to be happening in the North Valleys, and also the NDOT projects. So I've been working very closely with Director Keller over at RTC, and, and my staff behind me, and we've been focusing on, we've been committed to keeping this up to date.
Well, and those RTC projects are funded out of the RTC?
Correct.
Except that we're sharing the cost on part of Sky Vista, is that correct? Or no?
No.
No, okay. So all of the ones you are identified here are part of ones that we have advocated for and gotten through at RTC?
Yes.
So those are the RTC projects. The NDOT projects, obviously, are the Phase One and Two for the 395 expansion, and Phase Two is also an expansion of old 395.
Correct.
Okay. But that is also not City of Reno funded?
Correct.
Now, on this chart, or this landing page, the City of Reno projects, though, these are ones that we have had a direct financial oversight on in past budgetary years. Are there any in for next year that are represented on this map?
So we have the Talis area that's in red, and I believe it's in, if you scroll up there.
Yeah, we've got to scroll.
If you scroll up, in the legend there, it talks about the City of Reno projects, which ones have been completed and which ones are in the future.
Well, and the other thing I think is important, like the Mayor's Park Phase Three construction, some of those funds came out of CDBG.
Yes.
Right? And so the way that we have used CDBG is to find different pockets of money for different projects.
Yes.
All in the North Valleys, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate the explanation. I think it's a good reminder.
Yes.
Ms. Doer, I think you're up next.
Yeah. Thank you, Carrie. I thought, very thorough, as always, really excellent. I wanted to ask you about one or two of these projects. So the McCarran to Plumas, so are you, you basically going to tear up Plumas and a section of McCarran, or what's the plan? To put in a new sewer pipe, right?
Right now, we're in the preliminary design phases. So we haven't identified exactly where the alignment of the new pipe will go.
Oh.
But it's coming. We're working on a scope, and we'll be having, we'll put that out to a consultant, and we'll have more details. So when we bring this, when we bring the consultant contract to council, then we'll have a presentation that shows.
Okay. Well, are you anticipating, I guess I'm wondering, where on Plumas are you anticipating, starting roughly? Is it Plum? Is it Mount Rose Highway?
I believe it is Plum. It's on Plumas, Plumas between McCarran and Manzanita.
Oh, between, to Manzanita, so not even all the way to Moana?
No.
I got you.
At least at this time, we don't believe we need to take the scope that far.
Okay. And then, I've got another question. Maybe someone else will ask this, but the Keystone to Booth Siphon, so that's a sewer pipe, right?
Correct.
And are you doing it in concert with the Keystone Bridge, Booth Bridge?
Good question. Actually, no, we, we want to do the siphon before the bridge is, work starts. It's very important that we, we're not in conflict because of traffic and the residents.
Got you. Thank you.
Ms. Breckus, I think you were up next.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Going to number 69, Slide 69, I'd like to talk about your traffic safety. Now, that's an eight, a very small $800,000 budget line. It's increased over the years, since I recall, but it's still small for what I think hits the council inboxes a lot, which is neighborhood, traffic concerns. And we had some discussion earlier on that. So I want to understand and outline how this $800,000 is assigned, distributed, because it seems to go sometimes with the neighborhood project, it's a component there, or sometimes it's, you know, somehow outside of this body's decision-making, it's done administratively. And I think we need a fair outline process, because I have three in Ward One right now that I want to talk to, you know, talk about. So what, what is the thinking? How are we going to do that? It's a rolled-up budget item. Are there projects right now?
So right now, we're, we're working on developing the traffic safety projects. I will say, with our street fund and our neighborhood streets, we have taken, we're taking a very aggressive approach to traffic safety in all of our designs. And that money would not be used for that. That would come out of the $23 million.
Okay.
So anything that we need within a street project. So you had mentioned the Marsh and Sharon project.
I meant Mount Rose.
Excuse me, Mount Rose and Sharon.
Yeah, I did misspeak when I said that.
So that particular project is on our, is, has been confirmed, and it's 2025, I'm going to look over my shoulder, yep, 2025. So when we do that project, we're going to take a very good look at all of the traffic safety, and then we will use the, the street fund. So the traffic safety, the $800,000, or $795,000, that'll be used for special spot areas, right?
Okay. Okay. In one year, it did go with the Ambassador project, remember?
Yes.
So, so the answer is yes, you know, it's separate apart from the neighborhood street projects.
Yep.
And council's going to have input to those, or you're going to give us a list and show us how it goes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the bridge program, that's really important to me, because bridge maintenance is very important, and actually, the Ward One NAB is going to be discussed in the Keystone Avenue Bridge next week, because there is so much alarm about it. And I pulled out my file on it, where in 2012, I started to ask for all the inspection reports and the scouring, you know, and then we plugged in, realized it wasn't getting scoured, and now we have a scouring line item for that bridge. But this, this item's also grown. So what is in the $373,000 bridge program?
So I'm very pleased to say that we have four bridges under the RTC program for design.
Yeah.
That money is, basically, anything that needs to happen with those bridges will come out of those, that, those buckets of money.
Yeah. But this is bridge maintenance.
This is just bridge maintenance.
And which bridges are we maintaining with this?
This is for the Evans Creek, sorry, Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services, for the record. This is for the Evans Creek Road Crossing.
Okay.
There's some deflection in, under the bridge that we've identified, and so it's to repair, repair at least one cell under that bridge.
Okay, that's a little project.
Well, that's the design.
Yeah.
So the construction will obviously be in the next fiscal year.
What about the annual scouring of the Keystone Avenue piers? I thought annually, we were getting down and getting someone to scrub those piers and...
Right. So the Keystone Bridge is slated to be replaced. Currently, we do have staff going out there, at least at, when it's triggered at a threshold of the river peak flow rate right now, and we're inspecting the bridge twice a day, just making sure that we're watching for deflection and things like that.
Deflection, okay. So that's just eyeballing, you know, risk. But I thought we had an annual 100, I thought it was $125,000 to go down, have someone underwater, and get all the gunk off the bridge.
And NDOT does that, and I suspect that, because we're going to have high water here for quite a while, and if there is a bridge that has been inspected, and there's a note that says there's a scour issue, they'll send the divers down.
Okay. Okay. And then I do have another question, but I'll, on the sewer, but I'll let that go. But twice a day inspection of the Keystone Avenue Bridge, wow.
Any other council members have comments at this time? If not, I'll come back. Hold on, Ms. Breckus, let me just check with my colleagues. Okay, Ms. Breckus, this will be the second round.
Yeah. The other question was on this design for the Mill Interceptor, and I don't recall hearing that one. I'm even foggy on why it's called the Mill Interceptor, if it's supposed to be between White Fir and West McCarran.
It's actually the Lawton Interceptor. That's probably more familiar to you. It's the Lawton Interceptor, yeah.
Okay. But you're calling it on your, you know, I'm sorry, over here to you, I've been calling out my slides, and I did, 77, so the Mill Interceptor.
Yeah.
Which we call the Lawton Verde Interceptor.
Lawton Verde.
Okay. That's under design.
No, not under design yet. We're in the scoping phases. We're working with Utility Services to determine the limits.
Okay.
We will bring back a consultant agreement for the design.
I'm not there on this, okay? I am not there on this one, because I think we need to get other things going first, like the Keystone Booth Siphon and other things. You know, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the capacity. This is way out there growth. It's growth that, you know, at this time, as we're moving in a different way, you know, in the market, we don't want to get a stranded asset on top of a stranded asset, because the Lawton Verde Interceptor, I think we're still carrying debt on it, right? It might be paid off this year.
I think it was paid off this year.
It was paid off this year. But we, we put a lot of money out there, and it hasn't come to volition. I think we also have other timing issues out there, like the overpass. And so I'm not, this is how it works, to my colleagues, this is how it works. This is why we have a large swath of West Reno, still on Septic Tank, with people not having Leach Field options, and the river getting polluted with nitrates, because all of a sudden, and I don't blame you all, I'm sure someone got in your ear, someone who wants to sell a lot of homes and land, but we need to come back here and not let a collection capacity design jump ahead, come out of the blue, and jump ahead of other things. We were going to do the Keystone Booth Siphon.
Yes, we are.
That one's moving slower, though. We don't have a plan for Island 18. I don't want to see what I saw happen out in North Valleys, where lift station here, lift station here, lift station here. We're helping everyone else, but we're not helping our core area that's been paying, you know, in this community a long time and has their deficiencies. We've gotten better, we've gotten more strategic, but I, I am not comfortable with this mill, and not only that, I think you're, I think you're going to have a stranded asset on it. You know, I know the council wants to, you know, bond $30 million for Toll Brothers, and their infrastructure needs, but I think those projects are going to get mothballed. So I think the consultant needs to really look at the projections on the land use. And this is, you know, we even talked about the master plan implementation a long time, but that was one of the top master plan implementation items that the council has not done, given any thought to in years, which is absorption of lots, of, you know, of property to plan our infrastructure around. So I just, I just don't feel that that one's fine-tuned, from what I understand of it's Verde-Lawton.
No doubt.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. Any other questions at this time? Okay, I think that's all that we have for Ms. Kosky. Is someone coming up?
Yes. Turn it over to Director McGoon.
Thank you again, Ms. Kosky.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Carrie, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services, for the record. Let's see where we are in this presentation. We're going to have to go backwards a moment and talk about the total proposed fiscal year '24 capital improvement program. The improvements Carrie was referring to, let's see if I can figure out, well, I can't, oh, I have to use the, there we go. The projects that Carrie was referring to are these capacity and condition projects here, the 20 and 15 million dollars. In fiscal year '24, we are requesting approximately $38,000 for reuse, that's the American Flat Project, $21 million at Tumworf, $6.7 million on stormwater projects, $6 million on lift station, Rizworf, and then a half a million dollars on maintenance and operations. But before we get into fiscal year '24, similar to Carrie's presentation, I want to talk about what we completed and what we accomplished in fiscal year '23. So out at Tumworf, in fiscal year '23, we've encumbered about $10 million of the $11.9 million adopted CIP budget, and those projects included substantial completion of the Tri-Efluent Pump Station. That's the pump station that takes effluent from Tumworf out to Tric. The centrifuge de-watering pilot project and the screw press pilot project, that's a mouthful, also out there. Those two projects really are for, to increase efficiency and lower operational costs at the plant. I also wanted to mention, since 2021, we've initiated 18 of Tumworf's facility master plan top risk-ranked projects and completed five of those. This has reduced the risk at the plant due to, for plant process failures, keeps our treatment plant in compliance with our discharge permit, and continues to keep our environment and community safe. Out at Rizworf, we've reached substantial completion of the 4MGD $55 million expansion, which, when coupled with future effluent management solutions, will allow for continued growth in the North Valleys. And the expansion improves water quality processes such as UV disinfection and filtration that will be used as part of the treatment process for the One Water Nevada at American Flat Advanced Purified Water Facility. We call that the APWF project. So the APWF project is, we've presented here a couple of times, will, in the near term, provide, again, that effluent reuse solution for the Rizworf 4MGD expansion, and in the longer term, will provide aquifer storage and recovery, and ultimately, a new potable drinking water source. So moving on to that APWF project and where we are on that, in fiscal year '23, we advanced the design, or we're just about to 30% design. And last fall, we selected our construction manager at Risk, or C Mar, contractor for that project. Early last year, and also in the North Valleys, we completed the Golden Valley Lift Station, which was replaced due to failures that we're experiencing at that lift station, and then also increasing capacity. Next, we'll talk about the Dry Creek Channel Restoration Project, just north of Peckham Lane, within the Reno-Tahoe Airport. That was an unplanned and urgently needed project to stabilize erosion within the creek that was threatening the airport's security perimeter fence and access road. Well, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But additionally to that project, last year, we completed the long-awaited Rosewood Wash Drainage Improvement Project, Phase One. There's two phases to that project. The first phase, we received a $500,000 FEMA grant, and once Phase Two is completed, we anticipate being able to remove a number of homes from the floodplain. One other highlight that's not on this slide that I wanted to mention is, in fiscal year '23, we added the Detention Basin Inspection Program to our department, and to date, we've completed inspections for all the basins in the North Valleys, and are next moving into other parts of town. This slide, I just wanted to touch on real quick. Again, this is the Rizworf $55 million 4MGD, $55 million 4MGD expansion, and this is just some photos. I, I'd hoped to have a time lapse, but it was a little bit too long to play here, so I took some snapshots of photos. The upper-left photo shows the beginning of the secondary clarifier construction here, and then on the bottom right, you can see the finalization of that construction. This is about two years apart. In the middle is just a photo of some of the weather delays that we had on that project due to the very snowy season that we've had. Next, I will talk about our proposed sewer fund projects in the Utility Services Department for fiscal year '24. Out at Tumworf, we have two design projects and seven construction projects slated for the fiscal year that were approved by the JCC. Most of the fiscal year '24 projects primarily replace obsolete equipment, reduce potential process failures, increase redundancy, improve operational safety, and operational, reduce operational costs, and then a number of the projects, the de-watering facility, fluidized bed reactor, and digester number four membrane, also, including to the other benefits, will increase the plant's capacity. At Rizworf, we will, we will construct a much-needed expansion of the administration building and new maintenance building, along with rehabilitation of two of the older secondary clarifiers due to their age and poor condition. And in fiscal year '24, we plan to continue with the Advanced Purified Water Project and take that to 100%, from 30% to 100% design, including environmental permitting, and hope to bring to council the C Mar contract for their guaranteed maximum price and begin construction next year. The city's lift station assessment report that was completed in 2020, our team has worked diligently to complete the rehabilitation of those highest priority stations, and after 2024, after fiscal year '24, only a handful of stations remain to be completed. Each of those were recently brought to council and approved by this council for the design, so there's a lot to be celebrated there and moving through that program. On the stormwater side, the Chalk Creek Stabilization Project has also been long-planned for construction in fiscal year '24. in fiscal year 24. But the second Dry Creek Channel Project was also unplanned and urgently needed to stabilize another section of erosion in the creek that was threatening the airport's security perimeter fencing and access road. So one of the things to note there is that we typically don't spend 6.7 million dollars in a year on stormwater, but we've had a couple of urgent, sort of, I wouldn't say emergency, but very urgent repairs that were needed. And with that, those are the highlights of our fiscal year 24 capital improvement program that we're working to keep our facilities functioning, functioning and our community and environment safe. And I am here for questions.
Ms. McGoon, thank you for the presentation. I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, and maybe we'll look first at the, the original slide, which is number, shoot, number 75. So is the proposed 113.6, that includes all the things to the right, is that correct?
Correct.
And am I correct that you said that the reuse is at 30% completion?
Currently at 30% completion in fiscal year 24. We anticipate we will, it'll be near the end of fiscal year 24 that we will reach 100% completion and be looking to, looking for the contractor's guaranteed maximum price. This is not the entire spend that the city of Reno, and I'm sure that's where you're going.
Yeah, that, that was ultimately a question. I was trying to just square the numbers.
Yeah. So the city of Reno's portion of that is closer to 78 million, 78 million dollars, I Where we're at with that was we originally were looking at two GMPs for the project. And so that's how it's still split up. There, there is a chance that we will come in with one GMP for efficiency, but there's also a chance that that may move to fiscal year 25 just due to the timing and the environmental permitting that we need to go through. So right now, we're looking at this $38 million kind of as a placeholder for what we know today. However, I guess I'm giving you a little advance notice that may change based on how this environmental permitting goes through NDEP and some of the other processes we need to work on.
Okay, that makes sense. Can I ask, we've had a discussion in the last couple of weeks about forever plastics in the North Valleys. How does that conversation implicate this decision? Is there something that you want to speak to in, in a budgetary sense?
Sure. I don't mean to correct you, but forever chemicals?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, correct.
Correct. PFAS, yeah, so we're talking about PFAS. So what was recently found was PFAS within Swan Lake. Swan Lake water is not used for drinking water and the effluent that comes out of Rizworth has been tested in the past for the American Flat APWF project and trace amounts have been detected. So we did that for the American Flat project and knowing that. Moving forward, in the last couple of weeks, we've taken a number of tests, soil, water all over the North Valleys. We do not have those results back, but ultimately what we want to know is, you know, what is in the soil at the American Flat? Does it pose any challenges for the project? We don't know that yet. We're in that investigative stage. We do feel confident that, based on the irrigation of Swan Lake water up to the American Flat, that it has not leached into the aquifer because of the, the equipment that we have out there that senses how wet the soil is and so it doesn't overwater, so you don't have excessive infiltration into the soil. It would really be kind of a surface, a, a surface waters, I mean, a surface soil situation if that, if there were an issue, yet we're still investigating that.
Okay, makes sense. Let me see if my colleagues have any questions. Ms. Ebert, I'll start with you.
Hi, Trina, thank you. So under the reuse category, that's where we have the, that's the category where we have the pumping the water to American Flats, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm concerned that, you know, at this point in time, we're not pumping water to American Flats until we figure out this PFAS situation. So I'm concerned about having this on the budget at this amount, just knowing that we're kind of up in the air on this until we get some more information. And I know that typically we begin pumping water out in April to American Flats and that's not something we're doing at this time. So I'm a little concerned about having a set budget amount for that with the uncertainty that we're facing right now, considering we might have to take other measures for flood mitigation. I know that we're having weekly meetings to discuss issues like that, but considering we might have to take other measures, I'm just worried about setting a specific budget on that right now, given that there's a lot of unknowns that we're gonna have to deal with likely this year. So I know we have to come up with some kind of budget, but I think that we might need to have a larger discussion specifically about this reuse category. And I'm not sure if we can come back to this at a later meeting. I would like to have an agenda item specifically about the situation at Swan Lake and the pumping out of, of water to American Flats. I also know that American Flats is not the only area that uses water out of Swan Lake. I believe some goes to golf course.
Okay, can I, can I make a couple of clarifications? Swan Lake water is not used for, it, there's two separate things going on here. We have the effluent that comes out of the treatment plant that, that has been shown with barely trace levels of PFAS coming out of it. That is the water that we use in our recycled system that goes to golf courses and, and O'Brien Middle School and Mayor's Park, those types of places.
And that has the PFAS in it, correct?
That does not. That has trace elements coming out of the plant, so very.
Okay, so it's not going into Swan Lake first? It's going directly from the plant?
Exactly. That is going directly from the plant to these uses. We have.
But we've stopped sending it to American Flats from there, correct?
We have, hang on for just one second. Let's, let's back this up for just a second. So we have the plant where we have a current reuse system that goes to the golf courses and parks and things like that, that comes straight out of the plant. What doesn't go into that system in the wintertime goes into Swan Lake, but let's hold that for a second. Swan Lake, we had been irrigating the American Flat Farm as a flood control measure to reduce the volume in Swan Lake, irrigating that. We, we have not done that at all this year. We, we've ceased the idea to operate that way and we're irrigating actually with Tamwa water at this point. So at this point, no additional water from Swan Lake is going to the American Flat Farm, nor will it. And in the future, the American Flat Farm would be irrigated from the effluent coming out of the plant, similar to the parks and golf course is right now. So we're, we're bypassing the whole Swan Lake issue.
Okay, but we don't, this budget doesn't reflect that future process, correct?
It does, yes. This is that future process.
Okay, so this includes bypassing, sending it to Swan Lake?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's what I want a clarification on. And does this include any kind of measure we would need to take because of flow shape capacity, if we needed to use that additional capacity to pump water away from Swan Lake this year in particular because of the high level of snow and runoff and, and rain precipitation that we've had this year? Will that impact, you know, any other areas that we would need to utilize to mitigate floods, you know, while we can't pump water to American Flats?
So currently, the effluent we have coming out of Rizworth in the irrigation season, which we've started, now goes to our irrigation customers. It's not going to Swan Lake, so that's not going to exacerbate water levels in Swan Lake. The county has spent millions of dollars on flood control infrastructure, which, you know, they have a plan and we can talk to them about that, to mitigate any of that. This last week, we've, we've really seen a very minor increase in water surface elevations in Swan and Silver Lake. So we're really at this point getting a lot more evaporation than we are direct runoff into the lake. We're getting evaporation in the lake, we're getting evaporation straight off the snow, and we're getting snow melt, infiltrating into the ground and a whole lot less runoff. And that's due to the time of year that we're in, that it's, it's been warmer. I know it's cooled down over the last few days, but typically this time of year, we, aside from having a very large atmospheric river, we just don't have those concerns this year with Swan Lake or Silver Lake. Both of them have plenty of volume in them before they reach flood stages.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah. I'm gonna repeat a request I had, sorry, I was coughing, so I have something in my throat, you know, something I'm sucking on to not have a coughing attack. I'm gonna repeat my request that in this category, reuse be called Rizworth reuse, okay? It's our largest item up here. And the word reuse is very broad, and we know we have reuse at Tamworth. We know the county does reuse down in Stemworth. So let's call this what it is, which is a commitment, an obligation to Rizworth Sewer Shed, please. Okay? I don't mind in the fence, out of the fence, whatever. Now, to this acute situation of, you know, having a flood control project to relieve Swan Lake that we're now using drinking water to meet our obligations to a farmer, you know, that's like, you know, backwards, right? We stood it up, got this farmer, the land, got a contract with a farmer to use water that was effluent, which we wanted out of that basin. And now what are we doing? We're, are we paying for Tamwa's, the water service from Tamwa? Who's paying for it?
We are paying for it at a reduced rate.
Okay, so we're paying for drinking water from Tamwa to farm. And we're not drawing down Swan Lake with the 1 million, 1 MGD that John Flandberg stood up here on January 22nd, and I went back and watched the video and said, what's difference from 2017, 2018? It's that we can pull 1 MGD off and do the farm. Well, that has changed, so I really want to know how we're compensating for that. Because it seems to me, since January 22nd and now, if you ain't pulling 1 MGD up to farm, what are you doing and how much are you gonna flood that area? You just made some explanation, but I really want to understand it in the context of that 1 MGD. I am somewhat at the point with Ms. Ebert, what I interpreted her to say, which is, I don't want to give you $38 million. I want a plan to understand, because you have wrinkle after wrinkle after wrinkle. Are we gonna do a $90 million reservoir? Are we gonna sell, send water to the tribes? Now, you know, and, and it's always also, we've got tough permitting, we'll go through permitting. That's gonna be a tough landscape for you. And I really want a Gantt chart that shows exactly where you're going and if this scenario doesn't work, that scenario. And to me, that's where council needs to control this budget on this issue. Because we're looking pretty bad right now when January 22nd, we said we were sending up an MGD to relieve Swan Lake. And right now, what are we doing? We're buying drinking water and sending it up there, which I'm sure is not cheap. But let me just, one last thing is, you know, I, I think we're already stranded on in the fence. I don't think you really have a plan to get us to the outside of the fence. I think that permitting from everything I hear of Tamwa is four, five years on. And I think your C Mar's gonna get, your C Mar option is gonna get very stale. Because no C Mar is gonna guarantee a price that's sitting out there for two or three years while you're doing NDEP permitting and, you know, there's federal rule making, making on PFAS. So I think we pull this back and we just say, put the brakes on, we're gonna keep an eye on it very closely here. Because I'm, I'm a little unhappy that I heard from the GM at Tamwa that they were sending drinking water up to your farming thing probably, you know, in early February. And I didn't hear about this PFAS issue until last week from this side of the house over here.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, your time is up. Ms. McGoon, can I?
Bottom line is, I don't want to commit to this $38 million.
Understand, Ms. Breckus, you haven't committed to any of the money along the way, so I understand why you wouldn't continue to commit to it. Ms. Breckus, if I want to recognize you, I will. I want to give Ms. McGoon the opportunity to respond. I think there were questions in there. I, I mean, I tried to suss them out, and so I wanted to give you the opportunity as the professional in the room to respond. So help us to understand kind of some of the competing concerns that we have as council members. Because we're new to understanding the implications of these forever chemicals having been discovered. So just give us some direction, some advice, some response.
Sure, okay, thank you. So one item, we have not been irrigating since February. They just started irrigating last week, so there was no delay in that situation. When we talk about PFAS, this is really, I mean, we learned about this a, a number of weeks ago, right? So we are doing everything we can. We are scrambling to figure out, what does it mean? We're, we're out there getting, we've, we've obtained additional samples to verify. To be clear, the study that came out was one sample in Swan Lake, which, which is not a study, it's one sample. We did not know if it was sampled at a verified lab. We did not know, you know, how it was sampled, a whole bunch of information. So we immediately set to go out and get our own samples and verify the information that, that, you know, was presented at a conference and surprised us all, by the way. So we're in the process of that. Unfortunately, because of the new EPA drinking water rules, all the labs are backed up. We won't have that information for four to six weeks. As soon as we have that information, we will work together to understand what that means. I think ultimately, the main concern with the American Flat Farm is if there's any contamination of the soil right now. That's one investigation we're looking at. We don't anticipate it to be extensive or widespread, but we have to see what those results are. That would dictate, you know, what we do next on the farm to make sure that the, the plan that we have in place to move forward with that project is still viable, which I believe it will be viable, there just may be another step in there to mitigate that situation. So we are still moving forward with NDEP with permitting. We do have a plan. We have a Gantt chart, we have a regulatory roadmap. We have all of these things that are in place that we've been working extensively with the C Mar contractor, so they're aware of where we are, with NDEP, with our regional, with our partner Tamwa. All of those things are in place and moving forward. We do, we have a public outreach plan that is very extensive. We have, we've got a lot of things in place, quite honestly, that we're working towards to make sure that this stays on track. You know, I think that the PFAS issue could be a little bump in the road, but we're gonna have to figure out the extent of that situation.
Well, I think when we were in Monterey and we were looking at the different water treatment facilities, the topic of PFAS came up and there were some conversations about the, you know, just added scrutiny that it has required, and also the fact that we have to be able to figure out treatment methods because water is a, not an infinite resource. And, and we're trying whatever way we can to come up with ways to have a future that is sustainable. So it's an element of sustainability that they were very cautious to caution us about. And I think you and I had that same conversation on the bus, but it's just one of those things where none of us anticipated it, but we'll work through it as science and fact dictate.
And, and processes do exist to remove PFAS components from the water. So even if the EPA comes back and they have a more stringent requirement than the effluent we have coming out of the treatment plant, there is a process we add to our treatment train to remove that piece, PFAS from that treatment train.
Well, I think they were already doing that at the Monterey facility. There were like 14 steps and maybe number 12 was an element of removing that because they were a bit ahead of the EPA's process. So I think it's important that, you know, we'll continue to trust the science of it. And, but knowing what it is is an important component of that. So I appreciate your candid response because it's, again, it is budget related, but it's a broader conversation. And Ms. Ebert is right, we're gonna have to have more conversations about it. Okay, let me see if anyone else has any comments. Ms. Ebert.
I have another question, and we might not have the answer to this, so I'm, I'm sorry. But do we have any idea as to what the cost would be for additional filtration of the water to remove PFAS? Because that's something that we should definitely include in this budget. Like, we might not know yet what the EPA levels are, you know, acceptable, but if potentially we need to have a new filtration process, do we have any idea what that would cost? And, and not just for North Valleys, I mean, if this ends up being an entire city of Reno issue, do we know potentially what that would cost to add this filtration system to the entire city of Reno?
I do not. I can certainly inquire with Tamwa to see if they have an idea of what that would cost.
Okay, I think that's something we absolutely need to have at least a ballpark on before we commit to any kind of sewer reuse budget.
Any other questions from council? Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I'm just gonna summarize what I understand at this point, which is that the 1 MGD that on January 22nd was so critical to help us make it through, you know, where we're at with hookups and the shave, is no longer a factor. Because I'm not hearing any concern that we need to pull back the commitment that the council. any concern that we need to pull back the commitment that the council gave to the shave. So I'm really still wondering why January 22nd, 1 MGD of farm water going up was so critical and helped us in this big year, but it's not an issue now. So that's what I understand, and, you know, I'm not gonna ask you for a response, 'cause it's not budget, but what I understand is January 22nd, the fundamentals of that, because I don't see an agenda item to say, whoa, we're going too far in the shave. You know, it has changed. But something else that changed here in your budgetary discussion, that's where I wanna focus, is you mentioned, maybe we'll just open up Rizworth with one more MGD to, instead of the 2 MGD. You, you did say that. I, I thought I heard you say something along the lines like, well, we might just open it up with just an added of 1 MGD rather than going to the full 4 MGD.
Mr. Holt, can I invite you into the conversation? Ms. Breckus has already indicated that this matter is not on the agenda, so I wanna make sure that we're not violating the open meeting law by proceeding with this line of inquiry.
Well, I think we are talking about the budget with respect to how much money we're gonna put into Rizworth, and I think that question relates to, you know, that budget item. So, you know, obviously, I think we wanna stay on the agenda. So, once we finish with this line of questioning, I think we can move on.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, that's, that's trying to cut me down legally, and I, it's noted, you know, but I thought you did, you don't recall, earlier you said that we might just open up Rizworth with 1 MGD rather than going to the full 4, or we would phase it up?
I did not say that.
Okay, okay. So you feel we will be able to take advantage of the design of the 4 MGD with this $38 million, once we go through, you know, you said the, the regulatory roadmap that you have. Okay, I thought, I apologize, or I don't apologize, I misheard, I thought you were talking about an incremental ramp up to the 4 MGD of just bringing on 1 MGD to begin with. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't believe there are any other comments from council. Okay, Ms. Magoon, thank you so much for the presentation. Excellent, as always. Appreciate your time. Ms. Van Buren, I think we just have a couple of more sections to go. Where are we today?
We just have one more slide here. Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. Last one to finish this up, and it's just a budget timeline to let you know what the next steps are. So, we had our study session in March. I presented this to the, that presentation to the FAB, which was the budget at the baseline that council got in March. And then the tentative document was submitted to the state based on the recommendations from the city manager's office, which you're seeing here. And then we're obviously here today with this budget, budget study session. We'll go back to FAB on May 11th to present this to them as well. And then the budget adoption is scheduled for May 24th, so that would be our next step after all of the comments from today are incorporated and looked at as well. And then the final budget goes to the state on June 1st. So, just wanted to give you an idea of the next steps. And this, the end of this presentation that I have for you today, and then we would go into RDA. Are there any questions about the timeline?
[inaudible]
Okay, perfect.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're gonna go ahead and open the redevelopment agency board. So I will go, I will call roll council member Breckus, Dour-
Here.
Martinez, Ebert-
Here.
Taylor, Reese, Shivi. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board. Opening item E2, public comment for RD, Redevelopment Agency Board, we have none, so we're moving on to item E3, approval of the agenda.
[inaudible]
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and open item E4, which is presentation-
Are you laughing at me?
From Vicki Van Buren, thank you.
A lifesaver in my mouth. Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, what did you say? Sorry.
Okay, good afternoon again, Madam Mayor and council members. We are going to discuss redevelopment agency budget at this time. There are two redevelopment agencies. RDA1 is in the downtown area, and RDA2, as you can see from the map, is the purple area, which is located in seven different places around the city. Redevelopment Agency 1 was established in 1983, and it expires in 2043. It includes the downtown area and the parking garage on Sierra Street, and so that's that parking garage that is on the corner of First Street and Sierra next to Silver Peak Restaurant. That parking garage is managed by Colliers, and the parking garage revenues are pledged to debt, so any excess of the revenues over the expenditures, we have to transfer to debt. A fixed amount of motor vehicle privilege tax was given to RDA1 when it was established, and it continues at the exact same dollar amount until this redevelopment area expires. The expenses in the account are for the repairs and maintenance of the garage, and there is, there are bonds outstanding on this to, for various projects that were done, and the bonds completely mature in 2027. So when you look at, there's two different funds for this, the general fund and the debt fund for redevelopment agency 1. You see the motor vehicle privilege tax runs $128,000 annually, and then parking garage rent, typical, in a typical year, runs between $800,000 and $900,000 a year. Miscellaneous and outside services to do repairs and such on the garage can range anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000 a year annually. And then we do have a debt service fund. That's pretty much all that's in RDA1 general fund. Give you an idea of the RDA1 general fund and how those revenues have trended over the years. You can see that 23 revenues have really gone up, and that was because of that booking of revenues that should've been booked back to fiscal year 22, so that column should've been a lot higher. But you can see that, that one's been pretty consistent as we go along. When you look at the debt that is outstanding on RDA1, one of those pays off this current fiscal year, and the other two bonds that are outstanding pay off in 2027, so we have about $10 million remaining to pay on this debt in RDA1. When you look at the debt fund for it, the principal and the interest runs about $3 million a year in here. We did have to loan money from RDA2 to RDA1 per council's direction in fiscal year 22 to keep the, to keep the ending fund balance up in here until those bonds pay off. I do not anticipate that we will need to loan any other funding in here, because as you can see, the ad valorem taxes or the property taxes have really increased from 1.6 million in fiscal year 21, and we're projecting to be up to 2.7 in fiscal year 24, so it's really coming online. I did wanna give you a graph that we haven't shown you before, and this one shows RDA1 debt fund. And this graph is kinda interesting to me, because you can see in fiscal year 17, we sold some properties. We actually sold the properties around the movie theater area, and so that's why you see that big green bar for revenues, because we sold properties. But then, as we go forward, fiscal year 18 was the last year that we had an interlocal agreement to keep RDA1 whole, and so that agreement expired. And so when you go to 19, you'll see the small little bar of revenues. That's actually how much revenues were coming in at that point without that agreement available. So you'll see the, the line of the ending fund balance up at the top, it declines, because we were eating into that to pay the debt service all along, until we got to the point where we decided that we needed to do something, and council made the decision that we could go ahead and loan money from RDA2 to RDA1 to make sure that we could finish out these bonds, pay them off, and then RDA1 can pay back RDA2. But it, it's a really good visual representation as to what happened into RDA1. In RDA2, it was established in 2005, and it expires in 2035. Again, it's seven different areas, has Cabela's, the baseball district, Park Lane Mall area. The property taxes in here fully cover the baseball agreement, which is $1 million a year until the end of that, which is in 2043. We have a small other little dot in here, which is a small bond for Cabela's, and it expires in 2035. Proposed for this budget, as council had conversations on this in our March workshops, are two additional positions to be paid out of RDA2. It's a revenue compliance officer and a management analyst to assist with the plans and programs for going forward, what this RDA area can be used for, and what that plan is gonna look like. And so, an RDA2 general fund, it's really come online as well. The funds coming from property taxes have doubled from 21 to 23. So you see, we had $2.5 million in property taxes in 21, and we're estimating in 23, 5.4. So it's doubled in just two years. For next year, we're estimating almost 5.9, a little bit over 5.9 million dollars for property taxes in here. You'll see salary and benefits in here now, estimated for next year based on those positions. The baseball agreement at $1 million. That $1 million continues until 2043, when that agreement ends. And then you see also the loan from RDA2 to RDA1 that occurred in fiscal year 22. The big new item that's on here from when we met in March is in other expenses. There's a $10 million line item there. That's money that would be available for new projects going forward, based on the plan that council determines at some point for next year. May not all be used, may some of it be used. I built in this $10 million as a placeholder for council, so that you can determine what projects going forward you would like to do. When you look at RDA2 general fund, the revenues, they've really increased from fiscal year 18 up to fiscal year 24. And the main reason we have that $10 million there now is because we have not really done any projects with the money, so it has built up. So there is a buildup of funding in this particular project area. And the Cabela's bonds pay off in 2035. That's the only outstanding debt, and the current balance is around $500,000 in RDA2. And this is RDA2's debt fund. The only thing in there is that Cabela's debt, and we just pull over enough property tax to cover that within this debt fund. This is a look at the debt fund and how it's gone forward. The, there was a loan in here for a fire station land that ended in fiscal year 18, and so when that ended, the only thing remaining is that small Cabela's debt. When you look at redevelopment agency 1 and agency 2 tax increment projections, this gives you an idea on an annual basis of how much property tax we anticipate going forward. This is based on a study that was done back in 2019, and that was based at the time on what known developments we knew in the areas. We're currently in the process of getting that updated, because obviously, we've had a lot more development in the areas. But this particular one is just based on that study, and we will have that updated this year for council, so that as you move forward, to make plans for the RDA2 area, which does have some funding available to do some projects, you will have more current information on that. But there's at least $10 million, if not a little more, in there for projects for council to look at. So... That concludes my presentation on RDA, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead. Yeah, I, we need to redo the redevelopment area plans, okay? And I don't see that on. I see adding bodies. I see $10 million for projects, but we have to do the redevelopment area plans. I don't know who's ever read the redevelopment area plans. I don't know who's ever read the amendments to them. I know I have. And they're out of date, they're non-compliant. I can't believe that the folks who pay the RDA1, who got, you know, hit to have their tax money, go for more RDA, RDA two years ago, when we extended the life out to 45 years, did not come forward and say, we wanna see the plan, because they live in the district, they have to have consultation with them, with the district, and we didn't do it. And I'm gonna be very specific that we need to redo the redevelopment area 1 plan and the redevelopment area 2 plan before we start tapping any of this TIF. And it's, it's gonna be legally required, and we've gotta get there. So I'm disappointed that I don't see that on. I don't see a contract to redo the redevelopment area plans. So why is that not on there? And I, I don't understand what a revenue compliance officer is.
Okay, city manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we did talk about in the first iteration of these presentations, how we were going to spend money to build out both a feasibility analysis and an implementation plan for all the many plans we have on the shelf in the redevelopment areas. And I believe that suffices to modernize and make more real the redevelopment plan, and, and provides a roadmap to success for the redevelopment agency. It's something we talked about. It's the year's work plan for that function.
Yeah, but it's, it's having consultants do work without any public engagement, and it needs to happen. There are a lot of uses for which redevelopment TIF can go forward, and we're not having those conversations with our public and sitting $10 million and not having a roadmap. You know, the affordable housing folks need to come out, the folks who, you know, the interest groups that aren't getting that money into the general fund for police, fire, they, you know, we need to look, look at it from that perspective. We need to redo the RDA plans completely, and it's gonna be very problematic if we don't, in my view. But what is this revenue compliance officer? I've never seen that in a redevelopment agency budget, and I've worked on redevelopment work since the early 90s.
Thank, thank you.
Hi, Eric Adelstein, Assistant City Manager. Thank you for the question. So the, the revenue compliance officer is going to be an employee that will still function in the business license department, but it's gonna be focused on proactive compliance and revenue within the, the RDA2 space. So it's going to be, think of it more as a service, service-oriented compliance officer to help with the thousand-ish businesses that we currently have registered in the RDA2 space.
Yeah, you know, that, it sounds like a great thing, but it's something that maybe, you know, the public should have, you know, an understanding of, that it's in the plan, and we're gonna use the TIF resources for something like that. If it's a business assistance or a business ombuds person sort of thing, I don't object. I'm just saying, you need to have it back to your plan. And I don't see that in the RDA2 plan as it is. And it actually is completely different than what I thought it was from the name. So we need to go out and redo the redevelopment agency plans, and if the council's not doing that, you know, and, and hasn't looked at, it's 279, right? 279, and looked at the steps to do the plans in a minute, you know, you might want to, because there's some pretty tough standards to, to meet in terms of, you know, honoring what we're doing with taking this money off the table for other uses. It hasn't been an issue, 'cause there hasn't been money, but now that there is, we need to redo the RDA plans.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Dour, go ahead.
Yeah, well, let me ask, um, so I think I wanna ask Eric. So Eric, are you planning to update the plan? I mean, let me give you an example, flooding. So they're required to have a plan that's adopted by their board, and when they change it, they need to have an amended plan adopted by their board. And that's what they work under. It doesn't have to be super specific. Nobody says, you know, the micro level it has to go to, but you have to have a general plan. And so, that's called for by IRS 377B. Your, your plan is called by a different section of IRS. So, since our plan is very old, I mean, are you started thinking about that?
Yes, thank you for the question. Yes, an implementation strategy, plan, whatever we maybe call it, that is part of the, part of this next year's process.
Perfect.
We're having financial analyses done now. Public outreach is started informally, but we will do a more robust, you know, public listening session, outreach throughout, and, and then we're gonna work to build the tools to have that strategy built to bring back to you, so that we can have some speed and certainty to develop projects in the future.
Yeah, I think the plan has to make sure that all the boundaries are identified correctly for the different ones. It might explain the ability to use the increment from one on the other. That'd be good information for anybody wanting to pick up the plan. And then just, what are some, you know, specific or general or specific kind of projects? And then just what are some, you know, specific or general or specific kind of projects that could be considered or that are being planned? I mean, that's what you'd want.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Can I make one more point?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vicki, I have a quick question about, sorry, Eric, slide 17. What's going on with, in 2035, 36 with the blue line? What, what's happening there?
Thank you for that question. It's when the baseball agreement goes out until 2043, it's currently being paid out of RDA two, which is that blue line. When RDA two ends, RDA one will pick up that debt and start paying it in 2036. So the current bonds in RDA one pay off in '27. So then you see that blue guy and go to the bottom, they won't have debt again, and then RDA one would pick up that debt when RDA two ends and continue that until that baseball agreement ends.
Great, thank you, makes sense.
Yep, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so what is this $10 million that is projected to kick off from RDA two next year? It's $10 million that is not going to the school district for their share of property tax. It's $10 million that's not going to our general fund for parks, police, fire. It's not, $10 million a chunk that's not even going to Washoe County to run, you know, animal services or, you know, the libraries, okay? So it is all of the community's money that is going into this little pot, and this little pot cannot come through an implementation strategy and analyst work and informal conversations we're having with stakeholders. This money needs to be a community-wide discussion because the community is giving up money that would go to other purposes. And it needs to happen, and the more it is closed door, the more it is likely that those conversations are with people who are in the RDA, and they want the money to go into their pockets. And that's a very likely situation. We've seen that come forward before.
Hold on one second, you're past your time. Will you just reiterate, Eric, what you just said? Because nothing is closed door. I want to make sure that it's on the record. Will you please reiterate that?
Eric Adelstein, Assistant City Manager, for the record, no, absolutely nothing is, is being closed door. We are doing the pre-work, we are preparing the timelines, the strategies, and it will take time. Just about at my four-month break, so I almost figured out how to get in the building each day. And so we are, we are working, we're, we're working to build that strategy, which will be very public, which will be very open, which is the only way we know how to do things. And we will bring that plan back to be adopted before we take projects out.
We're excited to see it. I just want to make sure that that's on the record because that's not what's happening and it's, it's.
A plan to amend the plan, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Breckus. So wonderful. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Martinez.
I do see that there was a, it looks like a payment from RDA one in FY 2122 for that debt. Is that paid off from RDA one to RDA two? Are there any other payments going from RDA one to two?
RDA two made a loan to RDA one in fiscal year 22, yes. And once these bonds pay off in RDA one in 2027, and they may have some additional capacity depending on how much property tax comes in to actually start paying it off next year, which I'm kind of anticipating, and so they would pay back that debt to RDA two, that 1.2 million. It actually is an agreement that came before council, and it incurs 2% interest rate, and they're paying on it as well.
Okay, and just to get maybe some clarification, are there similar to other funding sources limitations on that $10 million, or can you provide some clarity with what can happen with those funds?
Yes, there, there are very specific limitations onto that, and I would defer that to Eric on answering that because that's why the plan is needed.
Yeah.
Sure. Again, Eric Adelstein, for the record, there are very, there are specifics of how the RDA can be used. I don't have those slides exactly prepared, but I can send from, it was, we talked about it briefly in the last, the March 29 meeting. The RDA has fewer limitations than, than city government, you know, it is a separate agency. But, so, but those investment activities are, are specified and ultimately approved by this body prior to, prior to being spent.
Yeah, if you could just get those to me or where anyone else wants them, please, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to recirculate. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Madam Mayor, can I just say one last thing? You know, we really need a primer. We open and close this budget, this RDA, just to prove minutes and don't have any conversation. And I've held off, held off, held off, wanting to have an item, but I would like an item, even if it's a primer. Because I'll tell you another thing, I left that March meeting, and one thing I thought about is, oh, no one mentioned that everything that gets assistant goes prevailing wage in the RDA, correct? Absolutely correct.
Do you know the rule off the top of your head?
No, I was going to say I don't know the rule off the top of my head.
All right. I don't know the rule off the top of my head either with respect to 279. Well, it's if we incentivize construction above a particular amount, and I think that amount is 200, but I'm not certain if the rule is different in the redevelopment space. And so I'm sort of looking over there and hoping someone can help me there. But in general, it's if we incentivize above a particular amount of money, but I think there is some nuance in the redevelopment space.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
When do redevelopment-sponsored projects, if ever, kick over into the prevailing wage space?
Oh, pretty quickly. Yeah, it's 279, 500, and it's, it's.
All I'm asking for right now is we get the consultants on to have the plan, to amend the plans, and at each of the next RDA meetings, we do 15 minutes increments, 20-minute increments of this is RDA 101. This is RDA 101, even starting with the maps of where the RDA areas are. We really, it's going to be an issue, that's not a bad thing to have, but it needs to be very, it's complex, and it needs to be very open. The public also needs to understand it and the money involved, too. So I don't know if there's a request for next agenda items, but I'm requesting an update on RDA 101 on our next redevelopment agency board. Thank you.
All right, any further questions? No? Okay. I'm going to send it to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to go ahead and close out redevelopment agency board, so I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Reese, a second from Councilwoman Dour. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. So we're going to go back to our regular agenda, so we're on closing public comment. Same statement as before, if you are on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. We do have one public commenter who has been patiently waiting in the audience with, looks like a family member. Hillary is here to speak on closing public comment.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Hillary. This is the first time in a while I've done this. Hi, Hillary. A lot of Hillarys in politicians.
Hi, Hillary, how are you?
I'd love to be a politician, but I'm really new at this, so forgive me.
No, good, it's great that you're here.
So my story is, is I've been homeless for a year. Like, I have no idea if you guys have any idea or clue as to what is going on out there. It is erroneous. We have a serious issue with homelessness, like Caris Campus is at full capacity at any given moment. I've been there for a year. The capacity is at 600. They are no longer accepting women because the original grant was for a men's shelter. And so it puts us in a really bad disposition. We've got the women's shelter, but that's, that's, it's challenging because it's, it's pretty far out. You've got one bus system that comes, it doesn't, it barely comes. It, it is just counterproductive. It's counterproductive for, for transportation, getting to a job, so on and so forth. So I personally, okay, so for this year, they raised my rent by $500, so on and so forth. I was a business owner before COVID. I have a son, I'm single mom. And so I just, I, you know, I've been through like every single American scenario, you know, so there are things that psychologically I understand, and I know, we need to evolve, like, we need to evolve in, in our homeless, God, it's so bad. Okay, so the issue is, is that, okay, so I have only known three people, I'm from Reno, I've been here since 90, 95, I think, yeah, it was like the year before the, the flood. I've been here since 95, and I have only known about three people at Caris Campus that are from Reno. So that means that everybody is getting, is coming here, and that they're, they're coming here, and then they're, like, it's just like gentrification inside the friggin' shelter, if that makes sense. Like, like, and so we're being pushed out and all, like, we're just like being shoved, and then on top of that, they're trying to make homelessness illegal, right? So, so that's counterproductive. Like, how are we going to make homelessness, where do we go? There's no placement for us. And, and that poses a big liability, too. So we have a serious problem. We have a really big problem. Like, I've been, I've been living on the railroad tracks, and I can say honestly, for the last year, living on the railroad tracks in a tent is the most stable I've been because I have my own space. So I kind of, I know, I understand what works and doesn't work, like, gosh, there's so, I have so much trauma in the last year. I mean, I've been hospitalized eight times, I've been jumped, I've been poisoned, I mean, I've been chastised, abused by, by, by both ends, you know, both communities. And, and, and everybody sits in my shoes as far as a home, and it's just growing. And I, I know, I don't know any, I don't know a single person who hasn't been extremely traumatized by this experience in the last year. So I've been like in a part of therapy since I was like nine. So this is like the good part of this, is, is I'm offering some solutions to the issue, and I actually think that, like, we could evolve. But like, it's going to take, like, it's going to take like, like, like some, something that probably has never been done before, but kind of has. So I've been thinking a lot about this, and I think that would be a really good solution to, hear me out, I know this is like going to sound like a lot, okay, so they do this in California, and there's a couple other places throughout the United States where it's, it's like a safe, they call it safe camp, but it's not, it's not like the same thing as in Caris Campus. So what I'm proposing is that, so we, I want to like grow alfalfa, okay, like, I'm such a hippie. But, okay, so I want to offer agriculture, like, with, okay, so why do we have Caris Campus and we're not growing crop? Like, we should be growing crop for the community. Like, this is crazy. Like, people are just sitting there and they don't know what they're doing. They're just like, you know, I'm just like, oh my God, these people need direction, sorry.
I think to your point, it's, it's complex.
Sorry, I know.
One size doesn't fit all for everyone that.
Right.
That experiences homelessness.
So here, let me just tell you. Yeah, 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 okay.
Because I, I think it's very, very valuable, especially coming from someone that has experienced homelessness.
Right.
You, you have some knowledge that most people probably don't have that can make a difference. We have something called the CHAB, and I think it would be really good for you to go and work with them because there are working groups.
Okay.
But they need to hear what the challenges are.
Well, so I have, I've like written all of it, I've like.
Okay, so like honestly.
Therapy, people need therapy.
Because remember, the majority now is over on the county side, so it's all.
Oh, okay.
And so that's the other piece of it.
That makes sense.
There's the county side, then there's Sparks, and then there's Reno. But the majority of all of the inner workings are coming from the county.
Right.
And, but I do think, quite honestly, what you have to say is incredibly, incredibly valuable. Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Who took care of your son?
My mom.
Is this mom?
Yes.
Hi, mom, you must be very proud of your daughter.
I know.
Proud of your daughter?
I'm a huge supporter.
And your son is, who's your son?
Jasper.
Jasper, nice to meet you. You look like a future mayor. I bet we can find some cake back here for you. What do you think about that?
So like.
So Hillary, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have.
I'm a little scared, like.
Don't, don't be scared. Listen, we, we really want you to be a part of the process.
Yeah.
Anyone that, especially you, that comes from a position of experiencing it firsthand and knowing the trauma and seeing everything that you've been through, like, those are very, very important aspects of coming to solutions. Because not, not one size fits all, and as you know, some people in the shelter are coming from completely different spaces.
Right.
And, and, and so that's why I, I think it's so challenging when we build shelters just for one population.
Yes, I know.
And that's not the way it should be because everyone's got their different ways, right?
Traumatized people, traumatized people, and, and so really at our core.
Yes.
Like, we have to look at the trauma, like, we have to heal, we have to get counselors in there, we have to work on harm reduction.
Yeah.
Like, and so within like a three-month period, like, I have it all written out, and I think it could work. Like, I was in recovery for five years, like, so there's a lot of stuff I do understand and like.
Yeah.
You know, and, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of solutions. I think that it would be really, really helpful to have, you know, structure, people need structure. If they don't have structure, it's chaotic, we're uncivilized. We're uncivilized union right now. Like, it is a third world country out there right now. And so then we're getting kicked off the railroad tracks on Tuesday, and we have nowhere to go.
Okay, so, um.
And we're actually civilized out there.
Jackie, Jackie is right here, and I want you to meet with Jackie so you can get involved and be at the table, be at the working groups. It's really valuable to hear what, what you think can help.
Yeah.
And so honestly, that's where we get the best outcomes.
Okay.
Is literally working with people that have experienced.
Absolutely.
That, so Jackie's going to help you.
Okay.
And, you know, let's get you looped in and let's get you busy.
Yeah.
Now, it sounds like you are no longer homeless?
I am homeless still, but I have a voucher, I just need to get working. That's another, that's a huge part of the, I've been applying to every job, and so it seems like there's a gap, right? And so, so I haven't worked in three years because COVID, you know, and then I've been homeless for a year. So because of that, I seem like a liability, and I could see why. I can see why, like, people don't want to hire someone straight off of Compton streets, you know what I mean? Like, it is scary, I think, on both parties, and so that's why I also want to address that, and, and, and there's, like, I really, really.
So guess what?
Yeah.
So Jackie's also going to tell you, I would love to see about Reno Works.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think you would be an amazing candidate for Reno Works.
Thank you, I want to be in, in this, like, I like being in.
I think you're going to like.
Okay.
How, well, we have a program that we think is.
Okay.
We think is very beneficial, and.
Yeah.
By the end of it, then you, then you get offered a job.
That's great.
And a lot of times it's tied with housing, so I think you would absolutely benefit from it.
Thank you.
And so Jasper lives with mom?
Yeah, right now. And then when I get the housing, I've, I finally got the Section 8 voucher, so it's like a three-year waiting period, but that's okay.
Don't, don't.
I just got it, so I just have to get a job.
Don't let that go, and that's another thing Jackie can help you with.
Okay.
So you came to the right place, Hillary.
I know, I can't settle for anything less.
All right, hi.
Thank you for hearing you guys.
Thank you, we'll follow back up with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Madam Clerk, anyone else?
We will move over Art Rangel via Zoom.
Okay, hi, Art.
Okay, oh, sorry, I just got, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay, for the record, Art Rangel, 255 North Sierra Street. It's in the Montage, and the Montage, as you know, was downtown and therefore in the RDA one area, redevelopment area. As someone who has spent decades in the redevelopment world, I know how complicated